Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, it's Jennifer, can you hear me?
Yep, can hear you.
Thanks.
And then give it about another minute to allow folks to enter. Alright, so it looks like everybody who's, who wants to be here is here. If anybody else does arrive, I'll go ahead and monitor the waiting room and let them in. It is Tuesday, October 20th, and so we will get started with this committee of the whole meeting. Just a couple of housekeeping items, those who are joining us on the Zoom call, if you're new, or if you're joining us in city council chambers, you will of course be afforded the opportunity for public comment to address the city council on matters that are specifically on this evening's agenda. You'll be able to do that after the council has had the opportunity to discuss the agenda item with staff. Members of the public present in city council chambers listening to the meeting will also be afforded the opportunity to speak during public comment time, so long as you have signed in on the public speaker sheet before 7:30. Public comment will also be afforded to the public who are joining us on the conference line, so long as you've provided your request to speak and the conference or the agenda for what you want to speak about on the conference line before the time afforded at the top of this evening's agenda. And written comments, as always, will be read aloud during the agenda item when they're available. We do ask that anybody wishing to speak, address the council as a whole and keep the comments to five minutes in length. Comments will not be tolerated if you include profanity or any other sort of disrespectful language. Now with that, we do have seven wonderful agenda items that we have to get through this evening. And so I think the first thing to do is jump right in, beginning with the fiscal year 2021 library budget. And for this, I believe Dave Ruff from the library, the executive director, will be providing a PowerPoint presentation. Dave, are you on the call this evening?
Let's make sure Mr. I'd be muted here, yes, I'm sorry mayor, I am here.
No worries.
Not sure whether I should share screen first or unmute myself, but.
However you want to do it, it shows all yours, so whatever you prefer. I've adjusted the settings so that you're able to take control of the screen. So when you are ready, feel free to grab the monitor and take it from there.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, I, hopefully you can see that. And again, thank you, I know you have a busy schedule tonight, and so thank you for giving us the time to go ahead and talk a little bit about the library. And so I'll get right to it. If you see the screen in front of you about a history of our levy increases, what you'll see is that we're going to have a 1.2% reduction in the levy for next year. And that will allow us to maintain operations, that I'll go into more detail as we go further. But the main thing is, it's going to be a quiet year, thankfully, on the capital side, both on rebuilding capital reserves and on doing capital projects. We originally were going to be replacing the now 18-year-old carpeting and doing some renovations that way next year, but with all that has happened this year, it seemed like a poor time to threaten to close down even more on patrons. So we're going to defer that till 2022 at least. The good news is carpet's still holding up very well, and we should be able to get a few more years out of it. Doing this remotely, since it's a little harder for me to see you all, just let me remind you, please interrupt me as we go, you don't have to wait till the end, I'm making this up as I goes as well.
Thank you for that, if they do, same rules still apply, just please show your hand for raising, and then I'll go ahead and bring that up for Director Ruff.
Thank you. That 1.2% reduction, the levy, will amount to about a 69 cent per resident reduction, and those are using the numbers that we get as far as the percentage paid by residents as opposed to businesses, and we checked that through with Melissa and Barry. And so this is the slide that you've seen every year, we'd like to put it in proportion. So this is a decrease, not quite as big a decrease as last year's 2% reduction, but another decrease nonetheless. This shows the relationship between our property tax levy, which is 97% of our budget, as compared to all other types of items like per capita and the PPRT and things like that. Normally, 2020 is more representative, but part of that 6.1% on all other funding is because we were putting in $94,000 from our capital reserves to help pay for replacement of our integrated library system, the computer system that we had. The company was no longer supporting it after 13 years, which is a good long run for the computer system. And that system is what helps us order books, check them in, check them out, catalog them, and find them. So the ILS is a big item in our, in our building. The dollar amounts that represent those percentages are, you can see here. The property tax levy is a little over 3.8 million. The all other items, again, PPRT, per capita, grants, things like that, about 116,000. Okay, so where is all that being spent and how are we able to have another reduction? Well, the main thing you can see here is that in 2017 and 2019, we had two building expansions. And so we had to build up the funds, and now we're bringing it back down to something more normal. We do the capital funds budget up through 2042. So this was a planned reduction for this year. And that's why the budget itself is basically a static budget but for the absence of some of the capital items. And I can go into a little more detail as we go forward. This is the staffing history, and again, the point with this is, is that we've made several reductions to sort of right side in the staffing over the past 20 years. But none of them were gimmicks, for instance, we all do shelving. We have roaming customer service so that we don't have people that are attached to one desk. If we need to put three people on a desk for two hours to help the public, they can do it, and then move to another desk, and that's helped us as well. So the main thing is that the staffing has been right-sized and it's stable. And it's not something that we decreased by 5% one year and then increased by 20% the next. This is the materials budget, and just by way of background, I know some of you heard this before, but we are considered a mature library, and that doesn't really have to do with the age of all of our staff members and myself. It's because our books, our bookshelves are full. And so when we receive a box of books that we've ordered in the front door, we have to get rid of a box of books from the shelves. So in that instance, the 12% rule, which we've talked about before, gives us more than enough money, anything above 400,000 is really a good amount of money for us to maintain our collection. The 12% rule is, is that if you want to be a member of the library system, you have to take 12% of your non-capital, non-reserve budget and spend it on materials. What you get for that is you're in the system, so you can do interlibrary loan, reciprocal borrowing, and you qualify for per capita grants from the state, which is worth about another 30,000 a year. So this number is very formulaic, and it's more than enough, as long as we stay above 400,000. And as a rule, we tend to overspend this budget with any savings we have in other items through the year. So that if we get to the end of the year and there's some money left, we spend it on consumables that we know we need, like light bulbs and paper and toner, and also on materials, because those are a direct benefit to the patrons. So the operating expenditures, again, that just makes the point, if you look at operating expenditures and reserves, this is where the savings are coming for next year, and this is what's allowing us to show a reduction and still not inhibit operations at all. So again, the, this is the budget, and it's the, you can see it's a 1.2% reduction. And items to notice here would be that the capital reserves fund, again, that was $94,000 last year that we put in from capital reserves, and we don't have to have that this year. So taking 94,000 and not having to spend it this year, and also reducing our capital reserve rebuilding, which is on, go two pages down here, near the bottom here, second to the bottom item, we're taking that down from $180,000 this year in 2020 to rebuild the capital reserves in anticipation of the recarpeting, down to 100,000, so that's 80,000 right there. So that is a quick overview, and I know that there are going to be, there may be some questions that'll get us into the details, but can I open it up for questions if you have any?
Of course, Mr. Ruff, absolutely. Are there any questions from any members of the council? Maybe not at this time. No questions being provoked at this time.
Mr. Mayor, could I invite you or any of the council members, if you'd like to come over and get a behind-the-scenes tour of what we've done at the library to allow us to reopen, we'd be more than willing to do that for you, because there's no blueprint for this. And we, I will say, I'm very proud of the staff and the board for having the courage to be the first library to reopen on June 1st. And for several weeks, in fact, a couple of months, we were the only library reopening, it took them some courage to do that, had it gone sideways on us, we, we sure would have had some problems, I know.
Yeah, no, I'll absolutely take you up on that invitation, happy to. And as you were extending that invitation, we, we did have some council members with some questions. And the firsthand that came up was Alderman Vessessi's, so Alderman Vessessi, if you want, you can take the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All I wanted to address is that, you know, I sat through some of the financial planning meetings that they did, and I can tell all the aldermen and any residents that are listening that the, the, the board for the library and everything did a very thorough job going through this, this budget, and really considering, you know, should they do a levy decrease versus a zero levy? And really coming through all of the, all the line-ons and everything, this is a very doable budget, from what I understand, that will not impact services in any way by doing the, the decrease in the levy. And Dave, you can correct me if I stated anything wrong, but I just wanted to get that on the record, that they went, they did a very good job of really thoroughly going through it, and they have some people that are really, really good at the finance side of things, so.
I should say that our, our expectation is that the COVID crisis will pass us at some point here, and that we'll be able to return to some normalcy. So it's built into the budget to allow us to go back to something that's normal. But we're going to have to wait for the environment to allow that.
Yeah, I'm hopeful that is sooner than later, to be honest with you. Alderman Sanoika, I see your, your hand is up, the floor is yours if you want it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Vessessi and Director Ruff. My question is on the two line items that we have here in 4116, interest income, which appears to be down over half from that 13,000 to that 6,000. And then the other item that I would like more information on is the over 64% decrease in fines and fees for 119.
Yes, well, the interest income, we spent a good deal of our money on those two capital projects, so there's a little less money there to garner income. And also, as you may know, interest rates are down a little bit right now. So the way we project that is I took our mid-year earnings and projected it into next year. So that's the, that's the interest income side of things. The fines and fees side is twofold, I guess. Again, we're looking at a combination of where we were halfway through the year, which of course is not as good a number, because the building was closed for over two months. So fees, for instance, copier money, and selling thumb drives and things like that was going to be down, but also, we don't have fines anymore. As you know, in fact, you and I talked, I think, last fall, we were talking about the possibility that we were just going to get rid of fines, because we looked at it and we were descending down below 15,000 on actual fines collected. But we were spending in staff time, almost $6,000 in staff time, moving that coinage around and counting it and taking it to the bank and everything. And so the net wasn't looking very good. So we had hoped to do this right after the first of the year. Then COVID hit us, and we realized we had another good reason to do it, and that is to take the stress off of our patrons. Many of them were sitting on their materials, and we wanted them to bring them back, because we never did close our return boxes at the library. And we wanted to encourage them and tell them that there were going to be no fines. And now that I know fines going forward, we were going to forgive all the fines that they had. So we tried to remove every obstacle that we could from people that were having trouble and not able to use the library as much as they would like to.
Thank you, Director Ruff. I also have one additional question that I received from a resident, and their question was regarding the cost of the current operating hours, since those hours had been reduced due to CDC recommendations. Do you anticipate that those hours will continue as far, as long as we're in Phase 4 in Illinois? Or do you anticipate making any staffing changes in order to accommodate a wider range of hours for patrons?
Yeah, the, the staff that we have would allow us to go to 72 hours if there were no extenuating circumstances. And that's the staffing that we have budgeted for next year. However, and by the way, a lot of our people are still, in fact, all of our people are still working their normal hours, even though we're not open to the public all those hours. So there's a lot going on behind the scenes when we're not open. The thing that's driving the reduction in hours is that, I guess we've had to make up some words here, but we have a grocery store, single-shift model for the library. And that is, we don't have any furniture, so you can come in and use the library, but you can't stay. And that has to do with having occupancy limits and making sure that we keep patrons and staff safe. The second thing is, it's a single-shift model, because we realized, and I guess this hearkens back to the staffing model that we had, that we looked at, is that we are staffed to be able to do 72 hours, but we're not overstaffed. You might remember, in fact, I'll go back to that staffing chart, we made some reductions to right-size ourselves, and that, and we've been doing it successfully for many years with that staffing. The problem now is that with the new COVID guidelines, now if you have a positive test as a staff member, you're gone for 14 days. If you have a negative test, you're gone for 10 days. And that's in addition to all the other reasons the people can be gone, they can sprain their ankle, they can have a loose tooth, almost anything. And what we realized is that we needed to go with a single shift. The single shift is, we have a six-hour day, and that means that one person could staff a desk, a public desk, all by themselves for the entire shift. It also reduces the number of people, they're going to be infected, if we have one staff member infected, they're not going to wipe out an entire department. As an example, one of the really important departments in this instance is circulation. Well, there's only six people in that department. So if you lose two or three in a two-day period, you've got only half of your staff left. Now, we have not had a positive, I'm knocking on wood while I'm saying this, we've not had a positive COVID test from any of our staff members. But we have had, almost on a weekly basis, two or three people in the building at a time that have had symptoms such that they quarantine, as they're supposed to, and have gotten tests. As soon as they do that, it takes out, takes people out for 10 days. Recently, we are just coming off now, having lost half of our maintenance crew, two of the four. And they're coming back on, so now we're hoping to get back to full speed there. What the board decided, and I think is the right decision, is that we needed to really make sure we were sustainable with whatever we were doing. You've seen some other organizations try to open too much too soon, and then almost immediately close down. And we know that there's a lot of hardship, not only on the patrons, but also on the staff, by overreaching and then having to shut down completely. So we wanted to be sustainable. And because there's no blueprint for this, and we're the first ones to do it, we decided to go with a single-shift approach, and it has worked marvelously. We have cycled through a number of people who have had calls on COVID, but turned out to be negative. But at no point did we have to close down any desks or the building. And our concern now is, is that, you know, there's, I'm sure you're following in the news, there's some rumblings in Cook County and also from Springfield that they may be considering moving back to Phase 3. And right now, we see some schools opening and then almost immediately closing. And so it doesn't feel like the environment is right at this point to leave something that has worked really well since June 1st. But I'll tell you, again, we said when we went into full lockdown that we were going to open as soon as we possibly could, and we did. And I'll tell you that as soon as we can safely expand the hours, we will. The system we have now, we have some weekday hours, some weekday evening hours, and some weekend hours. And you may get a question, well, what about Sundays, why don't you have Sundays? To tell you the truth, the reason, the big reason for Sundays is because of concerts and programming, and just to provide study space. So that's, those are three things that we can't do in person. But I will tell you that we have added a lot of capability on the e-material side. And the one area that we're actually up on is programming. Our August and September programming this year is more than it was in 2019. And that's all been Zoom and remote programming and concerts, so we're, we're very happy about that.
Thank you, Director Ruff. Mr. Mayor, I have no further questions at this time.
I'd like to say thank you, Alderman Sanoika, and thank you, Alderman Vessessi, for both the questions and comments. Director Ruff, thanks for, for providing this information thus far. Is there additional information to be providing?
No, I think that takes care of it, but again, thank you so much to you and to the city staff. You guys have really stood by us throughout this strange year, and we appreciate it. We don't take it for granted, and you really have helped us to stay operating.
Well, thank you for that, and we appreciate what you're doing with the library, keeping services available for members in the community. And I will absolutely connect with you after this meeting tonight, sometime tomorrow, so we can define a date to connect, and you can give me the tour, I'm looking forward to it.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. So. Moving from one budget to another, we're going to change gears from the library's budget and focus on the city's budget for the fiscal year of 2021. I believe this is going to be kicked off to Finance Director Gallagher, and I also believe you have a presentation, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Wonderful. So if you're going to share, feel free to take the screen whenever you're ready.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure you can see the screen in the city council.
Absolutely, it's perfect.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you very much. As we continue the city budget discussion for 2021, tonight in the agenda packet, we have a couple of items that we wanted to review, and then a short PowerPoint presentation. We are introducing tonight the 20- We are introducing tonight the 2021 Budget in Brief, which is new to the city. And this is really just a kickoff of summarizing the budget process and the overall budget in a couple of short pages for residents in the community to take a look at. We will grow this over time and change it. This is an ancillary piece, also to our Citizens Report that we provide for the audit. And this gives just a high-level overview of the city's budget. I wanted to touch on before we start the PowerPoint presentation that the 2021 proposed budget in its current format, we estimated all of the revenues and expenditures through the end of the year for 2020, and then also provided the 2021 with estimates that are subject to change, as we know. And we will keep up to date the City Council and let you know month to month what those estimates might look like. But in the budget itself, again, those estimates may be subject to change, obviously with the COVID-19 environment. Due to COVID-19, the city has prudently used reserves to help mitigate revenue losses. We have filed for available COVID-19 relief, and we have reduced expenditures and deferred certain items, and we'll go through that. Capital projects are continuing as well. At the end of the, the presentation too, we will remark on that, should there be no need for a discussion at the November seventeenth committee of the whole meeting, we would suggest to cancel that discussion line item for the budget, since we're continuing that tonight. I'm going to start with the PowerPoint presentation. Our commitment as a city to be fiscally responsible and thinking about resiliency and sustainability is really important. And I think that's really shown by the documents that we produce and our credit ratings. City of Raleigh Meadows has developed fund balance policies, and that is related to the hard work of our City Council through the years, management staff, city departments. And going back to 2014 with our first general fund, fund balance policy, moving on to the refuse fund in 2015, the 911 fund in 2016, and the garage fund in 2019. The city is within fund balance parameters for each one of the funds that have a fund balance policy. In looking ahead to 2021, staff will be proposing two new fund balance policies, one for the liability insurance fund and one for the health insurance fund. The city is committed to a long-term financial outlook for the city's operating and capital needs. And we also have received awards for our Certificate of Financial Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting for our audit for more than thirty consecutive years, also for the city's CAFR, or the audit, the popular annual financial report, which is called the Citizens Report, and our adopted budget. We're very proud of these awards, and they're, all of these items can be found on the city's transparency portal. And we appreciate the commitment for the City Council to continue supporting these award programs. Our city credit rating is very important. It's a very strong credit rating, and it does show the significant progress that we have made over, over time. It also indicates that we have strong diversity in our revenue streams. We have strong flexibility in our, in our budgeting, and we have a diverse revenue stream. In addition to that, we have a, typically around the fall, we will get surveilled from different credit rating agencies. And I think it's important that year over year, we maintain our credit, our strong credit rating, credit ratings. I wanted to highlight some of the items in the 2021 Budget in Brief. And I think it's important to note that this is the first one that we're, we're doing. So we're always looking for feedback. I know I, I had a couple of aldermen reach out already, and I appreciate your feedback. Feel free to let us know as you speak with your residents what else might be helpful, because we're always looking to add new information. But it is a year-round planning process, our budget process. We have a $60 million municipal budget. In addition to that, we have to start at the beginning of the fiscal year and all the way to the end of the fiscal year, or continually work on the budget. When we're thinking about this year, it was a very different planning process. And in addition to that, we had some things that we were looking at that we don't typically have to look at. We would never have thought that we would be using reserves to mitigate revenue losses due to a pandemic. And that's why we've had such success over the years, making sure we've had our reserves on, on hand, should there be unforeseen events such as the one that took place this year. City of Raleigh Meadows provides a full range of high-quality municipal services to more than twenty-four thousand residents and businesses, and hundreds of businesses each day. We have close to two hundred employees, one hundred sixty-four full-time and twenty-eight part-time employees across public safety, public works, community development, economic development, information technology, finance, and general administration. This slide will also show you that for the 2021 budget, there is no increase in the property tax levy. There are no rate increases for water, sewer, stormwater, and refuse. The capital improvements projects remain intact, even though there are some deferrals and reprioritization. And we are maintaining our fund balance reserve for the general fund, as mentioned, at a 24.3% range for the general fund. Our fund balance parameters policy for the general fund is to maintain about three to four months of reserves, and this budget does that as well. And Mayor, feel free to stop me. I, it's hard to see the hands if there are any questions along the way, too.
Will do.
Thank you. One question that we always get is, how much of my property tax bill goes to the city, overall to the other taxing bodies? This slide will show you that with the average of three townships, with the most recent data from the 2019 budget, every dollar of, every sixteen cents of every dollar comes back to the city to provide important services for the community. Again, we share this information routinely as residents call in, and this is one where we'll email to a resident if they have a question. Now, with this Budget in Brief, we can also share this information routinely from the website. Our current outstanding debt service payments, and we put this down from the 2019 audit, but we always make sure that we're showing from our current year position all the way out to the ending debt service. As a footnote to this, there used to be about a $3 million annual debt service requirement. Even with the addition of the 2018 and 2019 bonds, we're just under three million, or just over two million. So we're overall paying less debt over year, over year, over year. But again, these are things that we're monitoring every single year in case there are opportunities, as we have done in the past, for potentially refinancing debt. It's called refunding in the municipal world, similar to mortgage refinancing. We won't be able to do that for a little while for the 2018, 2019 bonds, but we're continually researching that to make sure that, should that be the case going forward. The city also pays low-interest IEPA loans for water and sewer, and those are not included on this chart. But it's important that we're always maintaining this information and keeping it updated. In addition to all of that information that's shown in this one slide, this is all detailed in quite, a lot of depth in the city's audit. The budget planning calendar for the remaining dates for the city's budget process, next week, we will have the tax levy ordinance, the first reading for some of the ordinances. November tenth, we'll also have readings. As mentioned, depending on the results from the discussions tonight, we will determine whether or not it is needed for a discussion at the November seventeenth committee of the whole meeting. And then by November twenty-fourth, we've got the final resolutions and approval of the budget. When we complete this process, what we would, will do then is also file our required items with Cook County for the levy, the budget, and other agencies. And so we will quickly turn around and, and complete those pieces and items for the required filings. I wanted to turn for a moment to the COVID-19 impact on city finances. When we started again the budget process in January, we certainly were not in that situation. However, when we moved through to March and April, we were obviously looking at a different picture. And faced with an estimated $2.9 million shortfall due to COVID-19, and when I say shortfall, we're talking the general fund revenue, the city acted quickly to offset the losses by transferring some money from the liability insurance of $500,000 and $1.5 million from the health insurance fund to the general fund. Why this was important is that we were able to build reserves in these cooperative funds, meaning they have cooperative insurance programs. And with the help of those funds, we were able to bring back funds over to the general fund. In addition to that, we also opened up reserves that were committed in the general fund. So we were able to bring a $2.9 million reserves into the general fund for potential revenue losses. In addition, staff is continuing tracking and submitting for any type of authorized expenditures for federal, state, county, anything related to COVID-19. I'd like to footnote that today, we did receive the $316,000 check from Cook County for the CARES Act. We're very proud that we were able to achieve that funding and receive the check today and deposit it. We are also working on the FEMA reimbursement program as well. Those are the types of things that we'll continue to do, not only in 2020, but throughout 2021. Capital improvement projects have been reviewed, and some projects have been deferred or reprioritized. We will continue to monitor those items to see if we need to reprioritize again. The work of our capital improvements committee is really important in that they will be able to help us, guide us in that direction if we need to move quickly. The way we structured the capital plan as well, should we need to come back to the City Council for any reason to reprioritize any item, we'd be able to do that quickly and seamlessly back and recommend any changes to the City Council. City departments have been doing their part as well. They've been keeping several staff positions unfilled that were recently vacated. There's been a slowdown on hiring and filling vacancies to save against revenue shortfalls. Staff training, classes, and professional education expenses were scaled back or altogether eliminated. And overall, as we've been discussing with City Council from every meeting, only essential expenses are being approved. The city is ensuring that we're being prepared for this year and also in 2021, in terms of our adequate stock of COVID-19 supplies, PPE sanitizing items, and other COVID-19 essentials. Our biggest burn rate will be our fire department, and that would make sense. But at the same point, all departments are making sure that their protective items are being monitored and stocked appropriately. And then we would also try to submit for reimbursement for any of those types of items as allowable by those agencies. I did want to move on to the largest operating fund. And just to kind of take a step back to that as well, we talked about at the start of the PowerPoint presentation that our budget is about a $60 million budget across all funds. The general fund accounts for about 60% of what we do at a city. So about $34 million in revenue is coming from, into the general fund. And this pie chart will show you that it's a pretty diverse mix of revenues. When we think about property taxes, it's about a third, a little more than a third, local taxes, which include sales taxes, intergovernmental revenues, which includes income tax, and also local use tax. And then we have a variety of other smaller tax items as well, or permits, fees, and other types of items. It's a very diverse mix of revenue. This is one slide that we would typically show to our credit rating agencies to show the diversity within the general fund. Expenditures by type in the general fund, this is exactly what you would see in a municipal budget. Really no surprises there that the largest share of what we do would be salaries and benefits. Eighty-three percent of what we do as a city is providing services to the community, and so that is what you would typically see. Our general fund expenditures for 2021 are approximately $35 million for the expenditures. We talked about capital, and there are lots of detailed slides and information within the budget itself. But I do want to touch on, this is a high-level summary of how we're spending our capital dollars, those important dollars that are going into infrastructure so that we can maintain and improve all our capital infrastructure. And again, one of the things that is most important to the city and to our government is to make sure that our roadways are improved over time. We've done a lot over the time where we've had smaller amounts of annual street program dollars, and we're close to about a $2 million annual street program. So we're very proud of that. This slide again shows that the, one of the largest shares of investment is in the annual street program and also our utilities fund, infrastructure projects. Close to $9.3 million of infrastructure programs proposed in the 2021 budget. Before we turn it over to City Council and for questions and discussion, what I wanted to also close on, again, is the resiliency and sustainability that our city has worked towards and the reserve level that we've been able to mitigate some of the revenue losses. Again, all of the items that are in our budget are estimates at this point in time, based on the best information that we could provide. We also want to make sure that, again, for the residents out there listening, that there is no increase to the 2021 budget for the tax levy. There are no rate increases for the utilities fund or the refuse fund. Capital improvements, again, remain intact. And overall, we will continue to keep the City Council and community informed as we move through the process going forward in terms of our financial picture. With that being said, I wanted to turn it back over to City Council to go through the discussion, discussion items for tonight to see if there are any other items that we should be discussing through the budget process tonight. And then also to kind of think ahead a little bit, what should we be looking at for the 2022 budget process? And letting us know a little bit ahead of time if there are things that we should be kind of thinking ahead a little bit. So I wanted to turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Finance Director Gallagher. I guess, you know, one quick question I, I would like to have regarding tonight and looking toward the future is, I, I have been asking for a while now with Manager Crumstock and Director Horn about getting the initial costs for mechanizing our refuse so we can have trash cans and we can use the mechanical arm to do the dumping. And so what I'd like to do is be able to, to look ahead toward that expense and see if the initial expense is going to be worth it from the long-term value and savings and additional benefits it can provide. So is there opportunity to, to factor these in, should this information come sooner than later for fiscal year 2021? Is there still time in there for these conversations? Or is this strictly something that should be looked for 2022?
Well, yeah, and I, I think that's a really good question, Mayor Gallagher. I think that when you're planning for something like that, we would want to look at 2022, given the fact that there are some planning pieces that you have to work along the way in terms of the operational piece, in terms of mechanizing the refuse trucks and also the, the toters and how you roll that out. So I, I think at this point, it would be something that, in my view, would be a 2022, 2022 item.
Okay, then I, I do want to keep it on the record for now, because I know I started this conversation well over six months ago with my initial outreach on, on getting this information and gathering these facts and statistics. So I would definitely like to have this on the record for fiscal year 2022.
Okay, very good, sounds good, thank you.
And then for the council, are there other members of the council that have questions? Alderman Sanoyka, your hand was first up, you got it.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think that the two items that I'm most interested in are on our agenda today on items, I think, five and, five, six, and seven. So I will be deferring my questions at that point, unless this is the time to, to be discussing finances regarding those projects.
No, I think those items, since they're on the agenda tonight, Alderman Sanoyka, thank you, Mr. Mayor, would be through that process. And then whatever is decided upon at that point, then we would update as necessary for the 2021 budget, if that makes sense.
It does, so then I, I'll defer my questions until those, those topics come up, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, Alderman Bessesi.
I believe I was going to ask the same thing as Alderman Sanoyka. I did have a brief conversation offline with Melissa and Barry. I will wait till we get to the topics later tonight to go into that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Director Gallagher, thanks so much for that. Just a real quick question for clarification. A resident did reach out to me, just, we spoke through the abatement from our last meeting, just some background on it. And they wanted to confirm, so I wanted to ask the confirmation. We're very fortunate to being able to hold our tax levy at no increase. As Director Ruff just said, they're actually having a decrease. I just want, for clarification, since we're not having any increase to our levy, the library is going down. I just want to confirm for residents that my understanding is correct. That doesn't mean that residents are going to see no increase in property taxes because we don't know what the other taxing bodies are doing. If school districts are increasing to cover some of their COVID costs or the park districts or the mosquito abatement, the other entities, there could still be an increase that's seen in property taxes, is that correct?
You are correct. We have no control over the taxing bodies, Alderman O'Brien. You are correct in that only the city has a zero at this time as far, we don't know about the other taxing bodies and the library has a slight decrease. And to your point, we don't have any control over the other taxing bodies, so you are correct.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I had.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, given the question asked about the 2022 budget process, the way, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like we have a million dollars that we're taking from the health insurance and potentially using for, to fund the general fund in the 2021 budget. Is that sustainable moving forward through 2022? Or are, at what point are we not going to be able to take from, take from those fund balances anymore and have to make different, different cuts if revenues don't increase?
Alderman Budmats, I would make the comment that at this point in time, that is not sustainable and that's also why we're going to be having a discussion with the city council about fund balances for those two funds. We're able to do that now, but that's also why we need to have the fund balance policies and also make sure where we sit with each of the funds.
Okay, so I guess for sure then we need to make sure before we get the 2022 budget out that we've just come up with a fund balance policy for each of those funds so that we know, I mean, and how much we can take or not take in the future and if we have to, if we have to make cuts in other areas.
Yes, and currently we are talking with the city's auditors now and reviewing the process to start the fund balance policy process for both of those funds that will bring back in early 2021 or 2021 to review and discuss and approve with the city council for both of those funds. Yes, so way ahead in advance of the 2022 budget.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, are you giving my time?
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to compliment the staff for doing the best job they could under these crazy times. I just like to remind everybody, even though, you know, we're not having any increase on taxes, we have moved off our 2033 to 2035 now, so in essence, we've mortgaged our pensions for two more years, so it's not pain free. Again, I think the staff did as great a job as they could in light of all the troubles we have this year, but thank you, I just wanted to pass that on, thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. Alderman Budmats, I see your hand is up, is it up again or just legacy? It's gone now, never mind. Are there any other questions or items for discussion regarding the fiscal year 2021 proposed budget that we just shared the presentation on now? Okay, are there any future items that need to be brought up other than what's been brought up? And if not, then I guess we'll continue on and we'll see where items five, six and seven lead us to for the results of this discussion tonight to determine whether or not the November seventeenth committee at the whole is needed to keep these discussions continued. And so with that, we can move on to the next item here. Thank you again, Finance Director Gallagher, as we move on to the next item, which is the chamber support for the business licenses. With this subject, if everyone can recall, I brought it up on matters not on the agenda on September twenty-second city council meeting. I brought it up on that date because that was the opportunity I had after having a conversation with the chambers board of directors. And it comes from the information, which is no different anywhere else, but that the COVID-19 pandemic has definitely caused a negative impact on economies locally, nationally and on a global level. Businesses everywhere are eagerly looking at ways to adapt in a post-COVID-19 world. The need to adapt is definitely no different for the business community here in Rolling Meadows or for the associations that support those businesses. The Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce has had a longstanding relationship with the businesses in our city, supporting them with resources, research and advocacy, among many other things. It's important to note that there are certain businesses in Rolling Meadows that have come forward to me at this time prior to the chambers board meeting, advocating for ways that we can creatively help support the chamber in order to keep it flourishing. And as a nonprofit association, the financial model for the Chamber of Commerce resolves primarily around membership fees to sustain a portion of their operations, while the production of events and activities provides significant revenues that ultimately keep the chamber afloat through their fiscal year. But with the earlier shelter in place orders and the current reluctance for large groups of people to come together, the chamber has been unable to host many of the events to secure the remaining funding for their operating budget. So current membership levels have experienced a dip, but I, I've had subsequent conversations with the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. And while certain businesses are restricting their spending as a result of their own financial uncertainties, there's other industries and other businesses who are still joining the chamber weekly. The thing about these peaks and valleys with membership is that the attrition rate is still within the typical guidelines that you would see outside of a post-pandemic environment. So there are businesses that typically join for just one year at a time and fall off depending on their industry. And so there is a decrease in membership, but it's not as drastic as saying that the Chamber of Commerce is running out of members entirely. And so one way to increase the value and relevance for Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce and the business community and for the city of Rolling Meadows is to create this opportunity where all businesses in Rolling Meadows would automatically receive a basic level of membership in the Chamber of Commerce. And the city of Rolling Meadows would do this by increasing the fee on the business license or the business license renewal if the company has already been established in Rolling Meadows and is a current business license holder. There would be an opt-out option, a checkbox for the business on the renewal form or on the original business license, should that business entity, if it's an industry that's suffering at this time, not want to pay that additional fee. There are other cities and villages around us that currently have these mechanisms in play. In my opinion, and through numerous conversations with the business owners who are members of the chambers board and just members of the community, they felt that it would demonstrate a stronger relationship overall between the city and the business community. It could also foster this perception to new businesses thinking about coming to Rolling Meadows, that they see a stronger partnership between the community and the city as a whole, if this were to take place. And the short answer from all of this from the council for me this evening to bring back to the Chamber of Commerce is to find out two things. And the first thing, is the city council willing to create this opportunity as a basic chamber membership option on our business license and our renewals? And if we do, will we be able to agree upon a price to incorporate into that upcharge? My first knee-jerk reaction when discussing this was an automatic one hundred dollar upcharge. And full disclosure and transparency, my business license, when I received their renewal form in the mail, I write the check and I mail it out. So if there was an additional hundred dollars tacked on to my business license, I would pay it no questions asked. My chamber membership as a basic chamber member is two hundred and fifty dollars. Now, I don't necessarily always use more than the basic level of chamber membership. So in one regard, it would save me a hundred and fifty dollars. But on the other side of this, if we were able to enable all of our businesses or majority who wanted to opt into this to participate in, the chamber would have a much more stronger bottom line and operating budget. And then, of course, there would be this graduated membership that the Chamber of Commerce would have to worry about on their side. So I don't want to get into the guts and details of that scenario. What I want to do is find out from the city council if they're willing to assist the Chamber of Commerce by automatically establishing a basic level of membership that gets incorporated, which the business pays for. So no money comes from the city of Rolling Meadows pockets out to the Chamber of Commerce in this area. It's purely passed through the city from the business to the chamber. When I said the hundred dollars, the village of Schaumburg has an automatic charge for a basic member of Chamber of Commerce is ten dollars. But theirs is ten dollars because the village also has this economic development fund and that fund is financed by the village. And the Schaumburg Business Association receives significant funding from that economic development fund. And so they're able to charge a ten dollar rate. So for me, I would like to have the council determine whether or not we can do this for our Chamber of Commerce, who's been up to bat for our businesses and our community numerous times, and then to what is a reasonable price to enlist for the basic level of membership. With that, I'd like to open it up for any questions on the who's, what, when, where's and why's, if there are any. Alderman O'Brien.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the background you just provided, it was helpful in the context from the reading. Just a couple of questions, my initial hesitation is, I had looked at about six or eight other areas and the only one I did see reference to this was Schaumburg, as you noted. Can you note the other areas that are doing this? Because the five or six I pulled don't seem to do that in terms of Palatine, Barrington, Hoffman, Elk Grove, Arlington. I couldn't find that there, so am I missing something and they do that also? Because the only one I could find was Schaumburg is one.
No, the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce can get you those details if you need them. The point about bringing one in to this conversation is that this is not unheard of and it's not an anomaly. And at the same time, I also don't want to use it to lean on the fact that if three others are doing it, we have to do it. What I want to do is say it has been done elsewhere and now the conversation is, are we able to do it? And should we do it? And is it a beneficial thing to do?
Great, thank you. And that was just the question. And maybe that's where I'd like to get to is the details before feeling comfortable moving forward. Because based on the rub, it does say other areas are doing it, so I would just like to get a feel for which ones are and aren't and pros and cons, so maybe that is something the executive director could provide. I guess there's some, I also like to see the membership trends also, because I know membership's declining. I know we have about, as of this morning, about a hundred and seventy-five businesses. And from a timing perspective, granted we're COVID, is I'm just wondering from a timing perspective, your thoughts on this is, and I'll let staff correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe licenses go out within the next two weeks. So if I was reading our ordinance and stuff, we might even need to pass an ordinance to make this change. And I don't know if timing's available to do that, if you're expecting for 2021.
So as I mentioned on September twenty-second, that because of the nature of the timing of all of this and the ability to have a committee of the whole after getting it passed by the chambers board, is that I would request for the waiver of first reading on October twenty-seventh city council meeting. Should the, should the city council find it valuable to partner, partnership and create this basic level of membership on our business licenses?
And that's, that allows for timing to go through because I know it's converting to the ERP system and the bills are manually done. So I'm guessing from a staffing perspective, that would be okay timing-wise?
So there are a hundred and thirty chamber members currently.
Okay, that helps.
There are ninety of them who are Rolling Meadows businesses. And so there's only ninety that would have to be cross-checked to determine whether or not they're a current chamber member and don't need to receive that upcharge fee.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Further questions, Alderman O'Brien? No?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to ask our legal counsel if, if us putting this fee on there is considered a tax and is that legal?
No, the way it's been proposed, it does not amount, it's not tantamount to a tax. It would be a fee that would be run through the city to effectuate a membership with the Chamber of Commerce. And it allows these business owners and applicants to opt out. So no, it would not be considered a tax.
Okay, thank you for that answer. I guess a couple of other questions I would just kind of consider. Did we, we think about, you know, watching the area news, number of chamber commerce in our area have basically shut down in towns that are much bigger than ours. Namely, I was looking at one today with Mount Prospect laid off their director and all their staff. And I think their, their chamber was a lot bigger than ours. It seems like some of the financial troubles our particular chambers had is just a long-term thing, it's just not just this year. And I guess the thing that I struggle with is why, why aren't we taking steps to merge with another, another chamber, whether it be Schaumburg or Arlington or Palatine? And get, get some help there, we seem like we struggle with numbers all the time. I know the chamber had taken out a couple loans over the last couple of years and now have paid them down. But even when things were going good, if they're taking out loans, that's not a good indication of the future. So I'd be hard pressed, at this point in time, Mr. Mayor, I'm not willing to support this, maybe others will, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Cannon. So to be clear, the city takes out loans as well, we just call them different terms. You know, we call them bonds. But the, the point about the chamber partnering with other chambers, if, if our chamber does that, what, what we end up losing is the specificity of value that the Rolling Meadows Chamber provides to the Rolling Meadows business community and to the Rolling Meadows residents in that circular fashion. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on that too, and this is where I think I'd like more of the details before I feel comfortable moving forward and support or not support it. So using your numbers, which is extremely helpful, so ninety businesses would be local that would get the extra to a hundred dollars, so that's nine thousand dollars. I think at the end of the day, we are trying to help out financially. Not knowing the financial details, is that going to help?
So, yeah, no, there, there, when I was giving you those numbers, the city of Rolling Meadows has nine hundred businesses in the city of Rolling Meadows, approximately. When I was giving you those numbers, that was current businesses that are chamber members. There's a hundred and thirty businesses that are currently chamber members, okay? And so when the business license has to be issued to the businesses from the city, there are only ninety businesses that are members of the chamber that are in Rolling Meadows. So therefore, the business license being distributed are only ninety that have to be double-checked to see if they're already a member of the chamber and don't need to be charged this upcharged basic membership fee. That's, that's what those numbers were.
Great, thank you for clarifying. And just to follow up on that then, so too, so using the nine hundred businesses, give or take. So in theory, if this were to go through, that would almost, in my understanding from what I was able to find on the chamber website, because I had some hard time finding stuff, they roughly have about an annual budget of a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand. And I'll defer to you as that being a board member. But this would almost double, right? I mean, that would almost, and I know the city has earmarked the last five years about twenty-one thousand on average over the last four years, sometimes it's twenty-five, this year it's fifteen earmarked. So I guess I do only feel more comfortable moving forward if we had a longer-term business plan of what the chamber's going to do. I just view this as any type of investment is before I'm able to say yay or nay is what is their long-term? What do members get on this? Because I could only find limited information, their, their rates fluctuate from two fifty up to eighteen hundred dollars for an annual membership. I couldn't find out what services are provided for those. And that's the only reason I would feel comfortable moving forward is if we had kind of a bigger outlook on the chamber's business plan.
So that, you know, the chamber's been operating in the city of Rolling Meadows for over thirty-five years, more than thirty-five years. The current executive director has been operating the chamber for thirty-five years. Their business plan, she can definitely speak to. But as far as the, the membership levels and the actual services or amenities, the words escaping me right now, but the actual benefits they receive as that level of membership, I do believe most chambers I do believe most chambers keep those. Played close to their chest. They don't just publicly display all of that on their websites. And I could be mistaken, but I I know that that's uh what my experience has been with the Rolling Meadows Chamber. That X amount of dollars in membership provides you uh up to five members and one free foursome in golf. And two tickets to, you know, the circle of success dinner type of thing. Um, that, you know, that that's a chamber uh situation and those are chamber deals. Wha- what I'm trying to do is foster an alliance between the city of Rolling Meadows. The businesses in the city of Rolling Meadows and our Chamber of Commerce and allow the city to be a conduit. To if we were to use a hundred dollars, and I'm not saying we have to, but if we were to use a hundred dollars. As a as an upcharge on our business license or our business license renewal. That that would provide our Chamber of Commerce. The ability to have ninety thousand dollars a year for the operating budget paid for by the businesses in this community. That get to participate at a basic level for that price. And of course, the larger businesses would have to pay more, of course, in the graduated scale if they wanted more than just the basic level of services. Now, if the council moves forward in agreeing to establishing this. Then the Board of Directors from the Chamber of Commerce can provide what the basic level of membership gives you for a hundred dollars. But there's no.
That's what I would feel more comfortable knowing.
So there's no um reason for the chamber to go through that exercise. Uh, to try and find anything different than what the current two hundred and fifty dollar uh value provides. They can provide that, but if the city council approves this, then there is going to be some augmentation to what the higher level. Membership um gets you. And so from this, if the the chamber director, I know she's here and she can speak tonight. Uh, please make a note to provide details on what the current two hundred and fifty dollar basic level of membership provides. And that would be around the lines of what the one hundred dollar basic level of membership would be on the business license.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my other part too is, I mean, given COVID, things like that. I I guess this is a recommendation too is because I'm still not a hundred percent comfortable is. Potentially, the chamber could request the Business Assistance Program too, like other ones have done. I I'd be, I'm open for discussing this. I think I'd be a little bit more comfortable versus throwing an additional fee, unbudgeted fee on businesses. With two months to go in the year is that I might feel more comfortable if this was for twenty twenty-two or something, but I I'm glad to hear what my peers have to say. Thank you, Mr. Or Mr. Mayor.
Sure, thank you. Um, Alderman Bud Matts.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So um I do operate a business in Schaumburg and um this did show up on my business license renewal. I want to say about five or six years ago. And that obviously the amount is less than what we're talking about. I think it's ten bucks or twenty bucks and like that. And so um my business just picked it up, but it's like a checkoff. So it's kind of like um like on your income taxes, there are checkoffs on your income taxes and you can elect to or not to um to do this. Um, but I think in in general, um foolish of us as a city council not to support the Chamber of Commerce. When all they do is sit there and advocate on behalf of businesses that are that are are in our community. I mean, specifically to our community. So many times I have I've sat at a city council meeting and had um the Chamber of Commerce. Testify to us or 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 stump, if you will, for some particular business that's looking to get something past the city council. Or to um pull in our ear to see if they can get us to do something to the benefit of of a Rolling Meadows business. And so that to me um seems to be invaluable. They are uh they should be a partnership. And they um it seems like they have been a partnership with the city. So for us to to um to do something. Which costs us nothing, literally. It costs the city nothing. So why wouldn't we? Put a checkoff on our business license for businesses to to become a part of the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce. All it does is build the camaraderie between the business community uh in Rolling Meadows with each other. And it gets them more involved in our community um with other community businesses. So that's in a juristic um uh growth o- only improves Rolling Meadows. I I can't see a a good reason not to support an organization that's not for profit, that's working. To better Rolling Meadows. And so why why wouldn't we if it costs us nothing? Um, and it's just putting a box, a checkbox on the um on the form that says, no, I don't want to be in it. Or yes, I do want to be in it, or however we decide to do that. But um if it's, I think hundred dollars is a tough nut for a business to to get a surprise with. I would I would recommend half of that um and and put it in there as if their current business fees, and I don't know what they are. Um, but if it's a hundred dollars, you make it a hundred and fifty dollars. And then if they choose to opt out, it goes back to the hundred dollars. And um I think most of them will just pay it and not even pay attention and just do it. And get the benefit of becoming an associate member of the chamber or whatever they're going to call this. Um, but it for us as a council not to support the Chamber of Commerce is foolish. There would there would be absolutely no good reason not to after all they've done for the city and for the businesses in our city. And I'd be embarrassed uh if we didn't do something for them um at this time when, as Mr. Alderman Cannon says. Uh, when chambers are having it tough for us to just sit by and say, oh, yeah, they it was great when they helped us for the last thirty-five years. Let's watch them flounder a little. Uh, it's it's embarrassing to to think that we're not going to step up and and do something that costs us nothing to do. Um, I'll yield my time.
Thank you, Alderman Bud Matts. Uh, you raise a good point about general versus specific value. I can think of a couple organizations and I won't mention them now by name that the city of Rolling Meadows pays and participates. Uh, in for fifteen thousand dollars plus at times. And we get very little in the way of general value or benefit. However, the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce, which the city of Rolling Meadows will not be paying directly. This is coming from the businesses in the city of Rolling Meadows, will get specific local value from. Uh, and this is what I want the council to start thinking about as we do look at other associations that the city is going to partner with. Or participate in or be a member of. I want to think about the general value versus specific value and what the dollars cost, because as we do move forward. Times are going to get tighter uh before they they get more liberal in this. And so just remember that as we're thinking of what we could do for the chamber. As a mayor, the chamber has provided me invaluable metrics on the class A and class B. Uh, buildings and and property managers of the tenants for those buildings and the corporate entities. And the employees who are not back in those buildings and what that's doing from a financial impact. Or the daily population cycles and what that's doing for our motor fuel tax potentially. Or from the restaurateurs who are in the chambers um membership. We're telling them what it's going to do to our food and beverage tax. The chamber has brought me vital information that I haven't gotten from any other place than the chamber. And I haven't had to request it from the chamber. They provided it to me as the mayor. And that's that's something that I very much appreciate. And it's valuable because I can utilize that in conversations to talk about the future economics of this city. Alderman Veniziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So um I brought this topic up to a couple of my uh businesses in my ward. Um, just to kind of get their senses on their thoughts since this would be affecting them. And the handful that I I was able to, you know, stop and speak with or call, um, were all in support of this. Um, s- and I have no idea who was a chamber Chamber member and who is not. I'm not privy to that information. Um, and a couple of them were already members and they thought it would be a phenomenal. You know, relationship between the city and the chamber. And then the couple that were not um thought it would be a valuable asset for them. Um, and they immediately wanted to know, well, what 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 um what more can I get and and what uh? When can I get started? Um, because our businesses need our help. Um, on the Economic Development Committee, that is our number one topic that we're constantly talking about is what can we do for our businesses right now? Um, and and I will bring it up. We're in partnerships with Northwest Municipal. And they came in and they made a presentation to us. And we are the one of the smallest towns in that partnership with, you know, the bigger towns, Schaumburg, Palatine, Arlington Heights. And we asked, what are we getting out of this? And as the committee, we really started to question, what are we getting for our money for Rolling Meadows? Um, and so to partner, as Alderman Cannon had suggested, to partner with another town's chamber. Um, it would defeat the continuity and the advocacy of. Rolling Meadows, because we already have that partnership in a different um business format. And in what we're getting for our money may not be um exclusive to our town and to our community. Um, a- and I think in this time right now, we've constantly talked as a council, how can we help our businesses? Um, and I think this is exactly what we've been looking to do. Um, I I think, you know, some of the ideas that staff has come up with as far as vouchers and. You know, restaurant plans and all of that has been great, but this will help all of our businesses, not a select category. Um, and and I think our partnership between the chamber needs to grow. Um, and one of the ways to grow that partnership and to grow the chamber is obviously financially. And and we need to support that partnership. And so I am very much in favor of this. Um, and I do kind of agree with the Alderman Bud Matts that I think maybe a hundred dollars might be a bit too much right off the bat. Um, so I could get uh support the fifty dollars um to, you know, do it this first year in the in the times that we're in. And 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 see this partnership grow. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veniziano, and thank you for sharing uh on the price point as well, because I I'm looking for that. Alderman Bessesi.
Yes, uh. My initial, you know, gut reaction uh was not necessarily in support of this. I've been listening to the discussion. And being somewhat persuaded uh. Uh, first off, the, you know, you're, I would, if we were to go forward with this, it would definitely need to be. Um, a lower. Dollar amount, maybe the fifty dollars that we've been discussing. Uh, on the. Topic of having an opt-out box. Would it be um, I would. Personally think it may be better, though it may yield less memberships. To have an opt-in box. Similar to the tax return. Do you want to contribute X number of dollars to the? What is that election fund or whatever they call it? Uh, but more of an opt-in, because what I. What I worried about is people who don't look at it. Pay the money and then realize afterwards. Um. Can they come back and say, oops, made a mistake? Can I have my money back? Um. The uh, just because they didn't check a box. Uh. The, so I'd rather have them have to check a box. The other option, if we. Don't go uh with this is we do mail out, I'm assuming we mail something out asking people to renew their uh. Their business license. Uh, do we put any kind of? Uh, brochure, pamphlet, whatever. In there promoting our Chamber of Commerce. Uh.
Currently?
Yeah.
No.
That would be another another option to help support our Chamber of Commerce. Uh. And then, uh, lastly, uh. When this, you know, at least by the time that this comes up for us to vote on it. Uh. I would like to see. Kind of something similar to what uh Alderman O'Brien was saying. You know, uh, you know, from a businessman's point of view. You know, the big thing is going to be what's in it for me. So what are they getting with this membership? Uh. At this at this level. You know, what type of of help or support or opportunity are they getting for this? Uh, because some of the comments I've heard. Is is, well. You know, I was in the Chamber of Commerce, but it really doesn't do anything for me. So we get people who join initially. When they come into town and then just drop out. Because they don't really, you know, what either they've made the contacts they need to make. And they drop out or. You know, they don't want to be asked for more money. In the future, you know, whatever. So. I'd rather have it more of an opt-in. As well as understand what's in it for. What's in it for the businesses. Um. While we move forward.
Thank you, Alderman uh Bessesi.
Thank you.
Alderman Sunreka.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. To all the points that Alderman Bessesi brought up, I think that it should absolutely be um an opt-out option. Um, because ultimately, you know, read your paperwork. And um, secondly, our our goal here is to try and make this easy for people. And having to do any extra action makes something harder for people to do. So just like voter registration is not automatic. Um, it requires an extra step. And so we have uh overall lower voter turnout to, you know, speak to the times that in the season that we're in right now. Um, as far as the pricing, I think one hundred dollars is fine to start with. It's lower than the the current base of two fifty by half. And also, um, I would much rather come back to the council and decide to change that price to fifty dollars. Um, than to have those who are already paying um fifty dollars to then bump it up to a hundred. I think that uh that the perceived benefit would actually be much easier and uh more positive for business owners to. Experience a decrease in pricing if that's if we're more interested in inclusivity and realize that a hundred dollars is excluding. You know, something like fifty percent of our of our businesses, then then that would be a decision for a later time. We just don't have the data to determine if that's the case right now. So I'd rather start high and bring down low than start low and then build up high in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sunreka. Uh, and to that point about the hundred dollars, like I said, for any current business. Um, that that does have basic level of membership at two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and again, using my my business as an example and using my business license as an example. I don't look twice at my business license. And also because of my time constraints, I really can't. Afford to get more than just my basic participation, which is even less than that in the chamber at times because of my my time constraints. And so for me, it would save me a hundred and fifty dollars. But it would also directly guarantee a hundred dollars from my business thing in Rolling Meadows. Is going toward the Chamber of Commerce, much like any other business that's in the city of Rolling Meadows. So it does strengthen and enhance the chamber, but it also provides a a bit of financial relief for me. And another account in my balance sheet. And so that's where I came up with the hundred dollar mark. And then bounce that around to other small business owners in the community who are okay with that too. But at the end of the day. I just want to see the council stand behind this opportunity and then define an amount that the council deems fair. Uh, Director Horn, I see your hand is up.
Um, Mayor, uh, I have uh just a a few questions. Um, if if you'd like to wait for me until all the aldermen have had an opportunity to speak, I'd be fine with that.
Okay, are your questions, you think, better suited uh for like the executive director of the chamber to answer? Or are they just general questions for the council?
They're actually likely council questions. They're not related to the chamber operation at all.
Okay, okay, then, yeah, I'll I'll get through the current uh, I see Alderman Diasis and O'Brien here, and then I'll circle back with you. Uh, Alderman Diasis.
Hey, thank you very much. Um. Yeah, I uh I work in a hotel. And I am a member of two chambers. One is the Northbrook Chamber and the other one is the Deerbrook Riverwood, Bannockburn Riverwood. So uh, it's not unusual uh to have um. Several uh cities represented by a single chamber. Um. I um, I gladly pay my dues because I get something from each of them. Um. And it's not just the networking. Uh, they do educational classes. They do women in business. There's a lot of things that these two chambers do that provide me a benefit. Um. Now, I I agree with Alderman Bessesi. It needs to be opt-in. Uh, people need to pick it and pay for it if they want it and and. People need to pick it and pay for it if they want it. And and I totally disagree that it's an opt out because to me, that's a that that appears to be a tax or a fee that the city is requiring. And and I don't want that. I think we need to be at arm's length. As far as the fee goes, I I question. I am absolutely opposing a hundred, but if and and I agree with Alderman O'Brien that I want to know what as a business, what am I getting? If I'm going to pay something, what do I get for this? I mean, and then Mr. Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're a board member, correct?
Yes, yes, I am a board member.
And and you said yourself that if you paid the hundred, you'd be saving a hundred and fifty. So I don't, I'm not sure, but it almost sounds like conflict of interest. You're you're offering, you're saying we should pay this, but now you personally are going to be saving money. So I think there you may have a little bit of a conflict.
Not no, so not just me and my term as mayor will come and go, or my membership with the chamber will come and go. What I'm saying is businesses in my situation, the basic two hundred and fifty dollar membership would save a business in that situation a hundred and fifty dollars. I'm using me as an example because I can point to me, but this has nothing to do with my political interests or professional.
I I think that i- if that be the case, then then why wouldn't the the executive director of the chamber put out some informational piece to these nine hundred businesses in the city and say, hey, listen, we're only going to charge you fifty bucks or a hundred bucks or whatever that number is to get a basic. And do you want to join? I have to tell you, businesses now, especially food and beverage businesses are barely making money if they're making any money whatsoever. And fifty bucks is going to hurt them. And by the city putting this on there now at this time in COVID, I'm I have a hard time with that because I know the businesses are barely making it if they are. I know people who are in business. I know people who own restaurants. And even though they got their payroll protection, and they're about to go under because they're not getting enough people in. And with this relapse and the governor closing indoor dining, I know somebody in Rockford who's has closed indoor dining. They're about ready to close the restaurant because they can't make any money. So whether it's fifty or it's a hundred or it's ten, they can't make any money as it is and they're going to close the restaurant. I don't think this is the right time to do this. I don't disagree with the concept. But I do disagree that the timing is wrong. And I do agree with some of the other things that were said, like I said, that I'd like to see what it is that they're getting. And if the businesses think it's something good enough, they'll just volunteer to do it anyhow. And so it needs to be an opt in. And I need to, like John Bessesi said, what's in it for me? I think we need to let the business know what they're getting as opposed to just say, oops, here you go. We're going to, you know, you're going to get whacked for a hundred bucks or fifty bucks. Or you get to opt out of it, but they should opt in if they want to join it. So I'm I'm a little leery at this time.
Yeah, thank you. I also think you're a little myopic in the sense that Rolling Meadows consists of just food and beverage businesses. We're we're a little bit broader than that. And ironically, I I was reading that some thirty percent of hotels will will be out of business by the end of this year, which is alarming too. And we we do have hotels that we'd like to to keep viable in our community. But I I wish the council would would broaden their perspective on this in the sense that the current basic chamber membership is what could be afforded to that basic chamber fee. So long as the chamber could receive almost nine hundred businesses in exchange for it. So anyone who's asking that they need to see more about what this basic chamber membership is, it's existed for decades with the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce. And could have, you can call or hopefully the executive director will clarify today what that basic fee entitles a business to. So I'm going to go through these last two series of folks here, which is Alderman O'Brien, the Director Horn. And if there aren't any other questions at that time, I'm going to open the floor for the speakers that signed in. And then we can conclude on this subject to not drive it all night. So Alderman O'Brien.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'll just take a quick here because I know it's my third time talking about it is that would just be my big thing. I don't want to reiterate it is I just only feel comfortable if we move forward saying, hey, business owners, we voted for this as a council fifty bucks, but I can't tell you what you're getting for, but I don't want to beat that that horse. And I am, I I do like the idea that the some of the other aldermen brought up about an opt in versus opt out. I could potentially be open to an opt in. Reason being, I view this as the chamber is not. People can either join or they can't join. So it's still, hey, you can opt in if you want to. So I'm just tossing this out there. I don't know if it'll go into place. Let's help the chamber and get a a bill insert into the business license saying, hey, do you realize the chamber's here even? Because I view this as it is now. People can either join the chamber if they see they're gaining value or they can't. So opt in, out, out, opt in or opt out is how I see it now. So that's why I would be in support of an opt in idea because that's how it is now. People can opt in or they can opt out. So maybe we just help educate. And as step one in the November renewal packet, we put a nice flyer or buck slip about the chamber to bring awareness to it. Maybe that's the first step. COVID passes and then in twenty twenty two, we can talk about a twenty five, fifty, hundred dollar fee. That's just my my part in thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Director one.
Thank you, Mayor. You have to bear with me. I've tried to write down some notes. The questions I have have really nothing to do with any existing chamber members or how the chamber operates. I I have a few questions or or concerns that I want to make sure the council is aware of. We have business licenses we do now for home occupations and very small businesses in like a multi-tenant office building where the the business license fee is a hundred dollars or less. And we very regularly receive complaints that because of their size and because of the fact that they're just a home occupation, that they shouldn't have to pay such a high fee. I just want to make sure that this business, this chamber fee will include all businesses regardless of their their stature, if you will, or categorization.
Yes, every business that exists in Rolling Meadows. And again, if you're receiving complaints from certain businesses, that's what the opt out checkbox would do. So it's one less financial hit that they have to complain about by just checking the box to opt out. If if fifty or a hundred dollars for an average or or a hundred and fifty dollars is too much for their business in the city of Rolling Meadows, then we don't want to put undue pressure on them so that check out that opt out checkbox would be valuable for them for that type of business.
Okay, that's fine. So that kind of takes care of the other question of a graduated fee. The other issue is, you know, my, I again, it's more in the messaging to the to the business owners. We're having this conversation tonight, potentially if the ordinance gets passed on the twenty seventh. Staff is going to try to get all these things done so we can get it out in the November first mailing. That will be the first first viewing or fuse first notification that the business businesses will have to this new fee will be in the application that is asking them to pay it. So I just want to make sure how we want that messaging to go out to them. Is it going to be a city council initiated issue or how do we want to message that?
It it would have to be, but what happens here and and now is if the city council blesses this idea, then the chamber's board of directors will put together a buck slip introducing this opportunity that can go out with the business license. So the city of Rolling Meadows doesn't have to determine how to articulate this. The chamber will do that. And I'll drive as being a chamber board member, I will drive that conversation with the executive director and the remaining board members on explaining the features and benefits of this new line item charge.
Okay. All right. The only, the the last thing is, just to confirm it would, there's no other different fees, right? Would just be a hundred dollars or or fifty dollars, yes or no? I only ask because you know, as as you all know, we're we're trying to evolve out of our old databases and old software packages and and move into a new ERP system for our all of our business licenses and permitting. However, our, we're not there yet. So our business license software we use as an is a really antiquated access database that really cannot be manipulated or amended. I mean, I'm sure the IT department has the ability to, but this each transaction will likely have to be calculated by hand, but fifty dollars or a hundred dollars is not going to be hard to add to that. But I just want to make sure how the operation might be affected by the change. That's all. I I don't know if Joellen or Elizabeth, I know they're both on Elizabeth as our resident expert on business license program. So if they had any other questions, but those were the only questions I had, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Director one. If they do have any questions now is the absolutely the time. Joellen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just to follow up a little bit on what Rob said. Anytime we look to implement a new program, of course, I always look to try and expect the unexpected because nothing happens without issues. So I I do have a little bit of concern about that database and our ability to modify it to kind of evaluate, except you know, this checkbox in or out is a concern. And I would really in the time between now and next week, appreciate an opportunity to maybe speak with our IT department and see how we need to do that or if we need to gear up some kind of a modified software system to accommodate this if we move forward with it this year. Next year, it's absolutely no problem. The new ERP system will be in place. And I don't anticipate we would have an issue with it at that point. In addition to the messaging question that Rob asked, I think you know, one of the concerns because we would see people getting this message, maybe having questions if we have nine hundred businesses that are calling community development with, you know, questions about how do we how do we support that? Is that something you want our community development staff to say? You you're opting out, that's fine. Or do we want to try to be supportive for people to join it? I mean, you know, what is, what what direction do we give community development staff when they?
I would definitely not like community development to force the opt out issue. But again, it what happens is these business license renewals in this case, because new ones come whenever new businesses come, but they they get mailed to the point of business and they fill it out. If somebody were to call, all the recipient that answers the phone would have to say is, yes, we're we're participating in a new collaboration initiative between the Chamber of Commerce, trying to strengthen our rapport among the business community and the city of Rolling Meadows during these post-COVID pandemic times. This is a good opportunity to help you leverage additional resources through the chamber that may be beneficial for you as you work through this coming economy, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be anything special. Now, the the I have a concern with the whole timing issue. And you know, I don't know what I don't know. But I do know I brought this up on matters on the agenda in September twenty second. And I I mentioned that there's going to be a basic Chamber of Commerce membership fee on the business license with an opt out. If if this was something that needed to be checked, I really, I mean, we had from the twenty second until now to check into those things.
Mayor, yeah, I I apologize. I may not have been part of that conversation or fully aware. I I kind of knew it was happening. I was I guess, waiting for further discussion and and consideration from the council. So you know, obviously, the council's direction is something that we can put together and will do. But I I just want to make sure that operationally we give consideration and provide the resources that our staff is going to need to implement it properly.
Sure. Sure. Okay, thank you. Anything from the council before I open the floor for the the speakers on the list, Alderman Budmats?
I've seen the, I've seen city staff be nimble on some things. I mean, I recall recently there was like a Halloween thing that we were going to move really quick on and it happened. And then it didn't happen when the council voted against it. So I honestly think that we can move fast on this too, as a staff of the councils behind it. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Alderman Diasis.
Thank you. I guess my first question is, are we going to have a straw vote on opt in or opt out before we take a a general straw vote on the whole thing? Are we having, are we going to have a straw vote on the amount of money? I'd like to, and then I'd like to get some information so that I can make an educated decision on this.
What I would like to do is first allow the public to comment and then circle back for our conclusions in all this. And that will consist of those straw votes to make those determinations.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So any other questions before I open up the floor to public comment? If not, then the first name that I received on the list is Christine Burbidge. Chris, if you're on, the floor is yours.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. So I have been a chamber member for about two years now. And I, a little preface, I'm a financial advisor with Edward Jones. My office is in Rolling Meadows right near Plum Grove Junior High. And I've been a member for a chamber member for a couple of years. I pay my dues. However, my business license is paid by my company and the money is put on my P and L. I couldn't tell you how much my business license costs. And so if you increase it a hundred dollars or fifty dollars, I would probably have no idea. I'm still paying for it. But the idea of saving myself a hundred and fifty dollars so I can use that money to do something like sponsor a hole at a chamber golf outing or that type of thing is a fabulous idea to me. I would, I would love the opportunity to not have to pay the additional two hundred and fifty dollars. Be billed a hundred or fifty dollars right on my P and L. And then I'm a member and I can use that extra money that I'm not spending on paying that membership for something else that would help support the chamber. So I got.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Kept that under five minutes. Then the next one I have is a is an email first from the president of the Chamber of Commerce. I also forward this to Judy for incorporation into this evening's minutes. And he writes, Mayor Gallo, I'm writing you because I'm unable to attend tonight's meeting when you read this proposal that affects the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce. Please know that while representing Northrop Grumman over the past several years on the Board of Directors with the Chamber, I have witnessed numerous occasions where the chamber has been a benefit to our business community. The proposal before you costs the city no money and will benefit the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce, which serves the business and residents alike. As a fifty plus year resident of Rolling Meadows, I ask that you and the city council consider the proposal as a way to benefit our business community, which in turn will benefit our residents. Thank you, Mike Hutchins. The last member who signed in is Linda Ballantyne, the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. Linda?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to address the city council this evening concerning the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce and the overall business community impacted by COVID nineteen. The chamber, like many businesses, has been negatively affected financially during the COVID nineteen pandemic since March prohibiting normal functions and operations. More than ever, our business service organization has been needed to assist businesses in the area of marketing, financial assistance, funding resources, certificates of origin for exporting products in a timely manner and overall general assistance. In order to meet the continued and ongoing demands of the business community, the chamber must remain viable and functional. Although the chamber has been able to provide business resources for federal, state and county Although the chamber has been able to provide business resources for federal, state, and county funding available under a number of programs and grants, chambers in general have been unable to qualify for the same funding sources being 501(c)(6) organizations, restricting our ability even more to obtain new revenue sources to replace the loss of some dues and revenue generating events that we have had to cancel indefinitely. Almost fifty percent of our annual operating budget is derived from revenue-producing events, programs, and sponsorships. We appreciate the council's consideration to review and assist the chamber through possible new revenue sources that would allow and encourage the business community at large to be a part of the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce. To try and at least answer a few things real quickly, we will be looking at different levels and tiers of memberships. So the basic membership, if it's going to be under what we normally charge, would include like a listing in the chamber website directory, a listing in the Business Resource Guide directory that goes out to all the businesses and residents of Rolling Meadows on an annual basis. Free participation in the Rolling Meadows Talk community-wide website that we have started with a free landing page. I mean, there, we will have to look, obviously, at different tier levels for any of those that are paying full boat for all the benefits and all the services that we provide. We do list that in our, on our website when you look into joining the chamber. We have also mentioned it in our 2020, 2021 Business Resource Guide that went out to the businesses and to the, to the residents, where we mentioned that we continue to assist member businesses that need to reinvent themselves, find matching resources to needs, obtain critical funding sources, and provide new program opportunities, which include our co-op marketing, which is that RM Talk, and discounted employee health benefits that we are offering to businesses that are members of our chamber to help keep their costs down more than ever with employer and employee health benefits and health insurance, as well as offering business and educational webinars. I will tell you that there is no magic formula to say, what is a business getting out of it? They get out what they put into it. And I, it is not uncommon for a business, especially manufacturing, that will come to us and say, I'm not interested in any other service you provide, networking, discounts. I am only interested in knowing that the chamber can handle my certificates of origin as needed. That is the reason for a manufacturing business basically joining the Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce. So, um, so it depends on the type of industry of what they're looking for. And if we know what it is specifically they need and we aren't offering it already, we're always open to seeing about how we can add value and how we can offer something specifically to that particular type of industry or that particular type of business. I also want to just address that we have, I think we're going to be celebrating our sixty years as an organization next year. And please know that when they pay dues, regardless of, of, of what that dues amount is, it is considered a business expense that they write it off as a business expense when they're paying any kind of association or organizational membership dues. And they're always good for a minimum of twelve months. So basically, what we've been offering now is, if a business joins now in October, they're good through December of 2021. So in essence, they're going to get fourteen, fifteen months of membership for the price of twelve months. If somebody joins, like, say, April, May, June, July, anything, then we say, you know what, your membership is going to go through, through June, July of, you know, of the following year. So we do, we do try to offer as much as we can and make it as easy for them as possible. So they receive, a full membership receives all the service and benefits that we list and that we offer and provide. So again, we would look at the tier level to see what makes sense. But I would say for basic, you know, discounted membership, certainly, they would get listings in those three different areas of inclusion that I mentioned.
So that concludes those who are on the public sign-in sheet for this item. It brings us back then, if there aren't further questions to ask a series of questions for straw vote purposes. You know, it's kind of interesting now in the order to take these, because the first question was going to be asking if the council is willing to add this basic chamber membership to the form. But then the curve ball between an opt-in and an opt-out changes the whole game of adding this, because if I have enough folks who are willing to have the opt, the opt-in versus opt-out or vice versa, then it just, it doesn't, doesn't go over well. So I'm going to start like this. I'm going to start by saying, I want to see a show of hands for those who are in favor of adding a basic chamber membership to our business license. Regardless of opt-in or opt-out, just who's in favor of adding this to? That's Alderman Veniziano, Sonoika, and Budmets. Thank you. You can put your hands down.
Done.
Finance Director Gallagher, I see your hands up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted just to help you with the opt-in, opt-out. However, the city council decides to choose to go, it might be helpful to note that the current business license, the way it stands, you might want to do the opt-out because you'll probably want to add it as a current fee, so it has a total. Meaning that, because it, because the way the, the form is currently formatted, that's just my thoughts on it. And I think IT would probably have to help us a little bit.
No, thank you for that. The thing is that nobody does an opt-in. It's always an opt-out. You know, like, it's backwards and it's, it's actually counterproductive, because we'll end up with the same level of members that you currently have in the chamber now if you're going to ask people to opt-in, because ninety percent of people don't really scrutinize this. And I'm blanketly speaking, but you just pay the invoice. And if you get an additional benefit from that which you paid, you got an additional benefit from that which you paid. And it's just about paying for value. And being a basic chamber member is an item of value that goes along with this. But now I want to complete this vote by showing hands for those not in favor of having the city incorporate a basic chamber membership on the city's business license and renewal. Those not in favor, please show your hands. And that's Alderman Cannon, Diasis, O'Brien, and Visessi. So thank you. There's no, no need to go on further with it, because anything else demonstrates sentiment here. So moving on to the next item, which is the zoning code update, item number four. I understand that Director Horn, you'd like to, to jump in and say a few words prior to Elizabeth and Mike Blue taking it over from there, correct?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. And, and just bear with me for thirty seconds. Before Elizabeth introduces this item, I just want to take a few seconds to publicly express my sincere appreciation for the efforts of both Elizabeth Payne and Joellen, Joellen Charlton. As Elizabeth will no doubt tell you, this project has taken the better part of a year to complete. And they have spent countless hours working with our consultant to develop zoning regulations that will guide future staffs, future commissions, and future councils for years to come. I want to thank them for their dedication, hard work, and tireless effort in assisting with the development of what we are, what they will be presenting to you tonight. They did an outstanding job. And I, I think if you have any experience with our zoning code and you took a look at all at our, our packet tonight, you'll see the fruits of their labor. So thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Director Horn. Elizabeth, if you're ready, show is yours.
I am. Thank you, Mayor Gallo. Good evening, everyone, Alderman, residents, businesses who may be here. In 2018, the city gave, city council gave direction for staff to start updating the comprehensive plan, which we did go through with TESCA Associates. And fortunately, we're able to adopt in April of 2019. One of the major recommendations of the comprehensive plan was to update our zoning code, which was outdated, antiquated, difficult to use. And in January 2019, the council approved funds for us to go ahead and make that update. Since January of 2019, city staff has been working with TESCA Associates to get a, get a feel for what we use often, which sections need to be refined more than others. We've had multiple meetings with the Planning and Zoning Commission, trying to keep, there's been some turnover in the commission, keeping everybody up to date, getting feedback from them as our residents and our planning and zoning commission as to where they wanted to see the zoning code go, so that it could bring Rolling Meadows into the future. Excuse me. As Director Horn noted, the, the current zoning code is a little bit difficult to work with, even from somebody who's practically living in it every day. The, the draft that we are presenting to you this evening has been available online for probably a little bit over a month now, for review for both council and the public. The public hearing was opened on September twenty-fourth. We heard from the Planning and Zoning Commission, we heard from TESCA, we heard from some residents and businesses. I believe Ms. Ballantyne from the chamber was also there. It was continued to October sixth, at which point the commission, the five members that were present, made a unanimous recommendation of approval of the draft, the draft zoning code. Here with us this evening is Michael Blue from TESCA Associates, who I, we have been working with very closely for well over a year at this point, to try and get the, the zoning code draft updated and, and ready to, to be moved forward. It's been a great experience working with TESCA. They've done a fantastic job and listen to everything that we have. So we really appreciate all their work and we appreciate the time from you, the council, this evening to allow us to, to show you this. It's something we're really excited about bringing forward. So I'll let, I'll let Mike Blue offer his presentation and then I'll have just a couple of comments when he's done.
Well, thank you, Elizabeth. Thank, thank you all. Mayor, members of council, staff, others who are here, thank you for the opportunity to share this with you. I, I have to start by echoing the comments that, that you heard from, from Director Horn and Elizabeth. There was a tremendous amount of work that was put into this draft by, by the city staff and by the plan commission. And I, I would go a little bit further and, and add to what they said as to why that's important. One of the things that you all know very well about municipalities is that they're all different. There is no right answer. It is both the, the blessing and the curse, frankly, of, of what we do. You have to find the best answer. And as a, as a firm, we do a lot of zoning. I myself have been a community development director. I, I know what it's like to sift through a zoning ordinance. So it's, it's one thing to bring that experience and share best practices and share what to do. But the idea that the code that you adopt is going to be customized to what the city needs and what Rolling Meadows wants, and what are the policies and practices? That's really on the staff and the, and the commission. And, and really, you, you got everything you could possibly ask for. This has been a terrific process and, and the staff and the commission have been great. I would just want to mention too, Francie Salinger from our office, who put in a lot of hours and was with us every step of the way. And also Greg Jones from the firm of Ansel Glink was part of the process. They did a legal review of the ordinance and have been available to help us with that. So what I'd like to do, if the screen will let me, you cannot share your screen while others are participating. I think somebody needs to let me share the screen so that I can share the presentation with you. I mean, I can do it now.
Yeah, you can. It's securities are set so you can come in here the screen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So hopefully you can all see a introduction screen for a PowerPoint presentation. Briefly, what I want to do tonight is give you a little bit of background on why the zoning ordinance. And then talk about what some of the major changes have been. And then if there are any questions or discussion, welcome the chance to participate in that. By way of background, what does good zoning do for you? Why does the city go through this process and what do you get from it? The, the most important thing about zoning is, is that it creates predictability for property owners and for you as city officials. Predictability in terms of what the regulations are going to be, what the process is going to be, that everybody is treated equally and fairly. And that's really the fundamental purpose of zoning. If zoning is inconsistent or confusing or hard to read, if the development rules are not clear and consistent, you lose that. And ultimately, this is an economic development issue. We work with a lot of developers as well. And I'm forever asking them, you know, if a community's got easy-to-follow rules and a good ordinance and all that, does that make it easier? And are you more likely to work there? And they always say yes. So that's, that's the other reason that this is important. And, and the, the point about what you're getting, being unique to the city, and the idea about adding value, you're always looking to make things better. And that's obviously what you and your staff are doing. And your code should help you do that. Why update this particular code? Well, as Elizabeth mentioned, it was part of the direction of the comprehensive plan. And, and the reality is, and it really came
is bandwidth may have frozen. I'm going to ask Elizabeth, are you here? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can indeed.
All right. Then I think Mr. Blue's bandwidth is frozen.
It would certainly look like it.
We'll just give him a minute, see what happens.
Yeah, well, if that doesn't work, I can certainly not do as well as him, but I can certainly make an attempt.
Yeah.
Elizabeth, this is Joellen. I think we do have a copy of the
I do. I have it, I have it up and ready to go.
Just keep it, keep it available in case we need to go.
Yes, it's handy. I can share it if needed.
I, I think we did lose him on the call. He's not in the participants list. But we'll give him a moment to see if he dials back in. And then I'll admit him when he dials in. Here he is. So he's coming back. Standby. Mr. Blue, welcome back. He may be muted. Mr. Blue, welcome back.
Does that mean you've had enough of me, or should I continue?
Please continue.
Thank you. Lastly, the idea of a legal update was, was really very important for the code. Laws change, rules change, right? The, the, the rules for municipal development are spelled out in state statute, but they get refined by litigation, either locally in the state or even the Supreme Court, and particularly for sign codes. So there was, there was a lot to fix. And codes just get old. It's just a function of what they are. There are best practices and that's really where, where the, the city's code is now. All right, I'm a little cursed here. There we go. In terms of the question of what did we do? Briefly, I would tell you that we did a technical review comparing the code to the best practices that I've been talking about. We got input, as you heard, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We talked to customers. We talked to business owners and property owners. We talked to a number of people who are customers of your code, because if the code is frustrating for them, we need to understand why. And we heard some of the things that you, you've, that we've mentioned tonight. And then the drafting process, again, you, you heard this from Director Horn, you heard this from Elizabeth. It's, it's an iterative process. We do a draft, the staff reviews it, there's a legal review. It goes to the, the commission and it's, it's back and forth. This is not a, here's your code kind of thing. There's a lot of back and forth, a lot of refinement, a lot of doubling back. And again, that's, that's why we're also very pleased and proud to be here with you tonight. That's, that's why the work that staff has done has been really so significant. In terms of the, the contents of some of the, the major changes that In terms of the, the contents of some of the, the major changes that are in here, the table of contents is frankly just a, a good start. If you've, you've looked at your code lately previously, I think there's four, there, there's five or six articles. They're kind of hard to follow. It's unclear what's in them. Just this improvement of structure is, is really a, a great next step for your code. Article two is the definitions. Boy, a lot of this is just really technical, but, but let me explain why it's important. When I was a community development director, we would always get a call at the office where somebody had a question about a fence or a building or a business. And it was just a strange zoning question of the day. And the first thing you do is you go to the definitions. The definitions are an essential part of how you and your staff apply and enforce the code. And if they get old or they fall out of step with technology or the way business runs, that's a problem. So we, we fix them in terms of taking out some of the standards. They shouldn't have regulations in them and they did. We ensure that they reflected local policy and practice. We added some graphics where that would help. And we made sure that all of the land uses that are in the new land use table are also defined here. And that's important because when somebody calls and says, hey, I'd like to open XYZ business, is that permitted? It's very important that you be able to help those people figure that out as quickly as possible. Article three is really the one stop shop for zoning. This has got all of the broadly applicable standards. And I frankly just dumped them in here so you could see how many they are. It, it's kind of the junk drawer of the zoning ordinance, you know, the drawer you have in the kitchen, it's got everything in it. This is where people know to go for all of these broad based things. And I've underlined a couple that we spent the most time discussing with staff and with, with the Planning and Zoning Commission. These are primarily now in terms specifically about outdoor dining and home occupation. These are based on impact. The idea is to, to regulate and mitigate adverse impacts that things like outdoor dining or home occupation or outdoor uses can have on the community. Not to be so narrowly specific about what can happen and who can go where, because that's the thing that changes all the time. The real concern are the impacts. That's what your residents, that's what your businesses are concerned about. And, and that's what this section now does a much better job of, quite honestly. We've also included the work that you've recently done in terms of cannabis related uses and, and video cafes and sustainability. So that's in there as well. Off-street parking and loading, very important, especially for, for business uses. Businesses need to have good parking and the number of parking spaces will often be the biggest constraint on how a site can be developed. So there's a bit of a give and take here. The thing that I would point you to on the left side of the screen here is that there is a lot in a parking and loading section. It's much more than just you need seven parking spaces or fifty parking spaces. All the requirements about screening, bicycle parking, opportunities for sharing parking and land banking parking, if you don't need all the parking right away. These are all modern approaches to zoning that don't require so much parking to be built. So there's less asphalt, for instance. The other thing we've incorporated in here is the opportunity to do a little bit of upgrade. So if somebody comes through and does a major renovation to their center or to their, or to their parking lot, they're required to install a little bit more landscaping and provide a little bit of an enhancement to the community. The other thing that is key to this section is there are more tables and graphics that are, that are part of the section. And pictures worth a thousand words kind of things. And that's, that's what we've done with the code. Significant change is that we created a use table and we have refined some of the zoning districts. This best practice is to have a table. So there's a slice of it on, on the left side of the screen here. The table is in your materials. You can, you can take a look at it there. But this is sort of the quick place to look to see, I am in this particular zoning district. I'm looking to do this particular business or build this particular house. What can I do? And this is a very easy way to figure that out and see what other areas are. So this information was kind of hidden in the code, quite honestly, and now is much easier to find. We have worked to keep the bulk standards, the height, the setback and all that sort of physical structure, location, the same. The idea is to not create a lot of non-conformities, not to create a lot of situations where, oh, well, my house was twenty-five feet setback and that met the zoning, but now it's supposed to be thirty. That, what do I do now? We've not created those situations. We've really worked hard to, to not do that. There were some redundancies, some districts that didn't work so well. The T districts really did not function really well. We combined them because they were similar and combined them with the C three to turn them into more of a, of an office kind of district. Fewer districts are better because it's just, it's easier for people to know what they can do and where they can do it. We've eliminated cumulative zoning. And again, I'm kind of getting into the inside baseball part of this, but want to convey the, the benefits that you're going to get out of this. Cumulative zoning is when the business district says you can do all of this. And then the, the C one says you can do all of this and the C two says, well, you can do all of this plus all of this. And this kind of piling up zoning is, is not clear. It's hard to use and it doesn't create distinctive, attractive development districts. So last thing I would point out here is we made sure that there are purpose statements for each of these districts. So that when somebody is looking to figure out, can they amend their map? Can they amend the text of the zoning ordinance? Are they appropriate to be in a certain area? There's a very clear statement that explains to them where they are. This is also going to be a useful tool for you and for your planning zoning commission when you look at amendments or changing regulations. As I mentioned briefly, we did make some changes in terms of consolidating the T districts and the C three. I would tell you that staff was very meticulous in terms of identifying all of these properties. They were all notified of the process. And they have been incorporated in such a way that the rights that have been added, there have not been rights taken away. So the types of businesses that can be there, the types of bulk standards that are there are consistent with the rights that, that property owners had. We had a few questions about that at the public hearing and I believe we, we answered them to, to everybody's satisfaction. New and up, the updated and current zoning maps. I show this not to kind of have everybody try and stare at it until their eyes hurt, but to point out that on the right, the current zoning map just shows more districts than, than, than the map on the left. Look more at the legends than at the maps. And it's always better to have fewer. It's easier for people to understand. It's easier for staff to, to manage and deal with. We had a client once who said, we have forty-nine zoning districts. Is that too many? And we suggested that, yes, it was way too many. And what is wrong with you? So the idea of having a concise, clear to understand code is part of that. And, and the current code doesn't do that. And again, with the help of everybody pulling together, the, the new one really does. Administration and review, these are the procedures that your residents and your businesses go through in terms of whether or not it's getting a special use or a variation of variance. These are all now very clearly spelled out. They've got these nice little charts because some people read charts better than, better than looking at, at words. We've also specified and clarified the standards for approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission had a very good discussion about what is a hardship? And how do we know that a hardship is really being met if we're going to grant a variation here? And so that's much clearer now. And that's a, a good example of, of what happened to this section. Again, this is something that needs to be predictable. You all as elected officials need to know that this is fair and consistent, plays out the same for everybody. And you know that there's been a public hearing and a thoughtful discussion, so you can have the confidence to act on the things that come before you. That's a big part of the changes to this article. Signs. Signs are significant for any number of reasons, not the least of which is that they are regulated by the First Amendment. There was a case a couple of years ago that came out of Arizona, of all places, that changed the rules for how code, for how sign codes can be applied and administered. This importance of content neutrality, literally a First Amendment issue, essentially made everybody's sign codes unconstitutional. And so I would suggest you, the first thing we did was we made the sign code constitutional. We also made some, some significant changes in terms of eliminating poll signs. Poll signs can continue, but they're non-conforming. New signs would have to be monument signs like you see over here with the, with the sketch. This kind of graphic is now in the code, so it's easier for people to understand what we, what the city means when you say an awning or a canopy or a monument sign. But this change to eliminate new poll signs is really significant. And I suggested, I, I brought this up with the Plan Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission. I said, when you drive down a corridor in any community, look at the signs and look at the landscaping. If the signs are a little smaller, if the landscaping is a little bigger, I'm going to guess that your gut reaction is, hey, this, this is kind of nice here. And if the signs are big and the landscaping is small, it, it's going to be the opposite. It, it's almost that simple in terms of enhancing the character of a commercial corridor. And that's what we've done here with the signs and the landscaping that's part of the, that's part of the parking section. The other thing we, we've done is based on the applications you've been getting is that we've reduced the maximum allowance for wall signs, which is common. Most, most sign codes have just got way too much sign permitted. Most people can't even take advantage of it, either based on the size of the building or, or the, 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 the amount of area they have. So that is my ten-minute summary of a year and a half's worth of work. Again, I, I can't tell you how much, how much I appreciate the chance to work with your staff on this and, and your Planning and Zoning Commission. The, the time that they all poured into it will really make this a, a very rolling meadow specific code and a very useful code for you. And I, I congratulate you and I'm glad to discuss it or answer any questions you may have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Blue. Thank you for the presentation and the details surrounding that. Before I open up the floor, Elizabeth, is there anything additional you would like to add or are we good here?
Yeah, just a, a, a couple of minor things. So this, this is a, it's a big thing. And, and you know, we're, we're changing the code, we're changing how it's laid out and, and changing some of the requirements. So you know, the big question that, that we would have moving forward and that we would ask for council direction is when, you know, when do we bring this into effect? If there are, you know, no significant questions or changes from council tonight, then we would anticipate bringing this forward for first reading before you next week on the twenty-seventh. After that, we've been tossing around a, a, a couple of potential dates to, to suggest to you to have this code go into effect. One would be December first, one would be January first. We do have a couple of things in the pipeline, a, a potential variance request, a, a sign appeal, which we would probably have in, in the January Planning and Zoning Commission agenda. But we do have one thing, which is the Shelby's Video Gaming Cafe, which needs a special use. So you know, for, for purposes of keeping them moving forward, if they, if they choose to move forward, we would probably suggest a, a January first effective date for the new zoning code. So thank you very much. And as Mr. Blue said, we're, we're here for any questions or discussion the council might have.
Wonderful. Thank you. Then at this time, I do see there are some hands up for council questions and we'll kick it off with Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. Talking about major changes, current R one lot size is ten thousand square feet. And we're making it the new lot size thirty-two thousand square feet. So how many, how many thirty-two thousand square foot lots are there in Rolling Meadows and how many would conform for R one at this point?
Well, we are, but we aren't, Alderman Budmats. And what it is, is we're, we're not actually changing that. What we're doing is changing the name. So what is currently known as R one will now be R two. And the purpose of that is, is because it's, it's more, it, it's a, it's a more logical progression of the, of the districts. Right now, our, our five is the thirty-two thousand square foot lot size. There are some, there are some, there's one area zoned R five to the west of fifty-three, I believe. So in short, it, it's not going to create any non-conformities. Those lots that are currently R one will be known as R two moving forward.
Okay, thank you. And then there's some inconsistencies. On page four, it says thirty-two thousand. But on page eighty, it says thirty-two thousand six hundred square feet. So I'm trying to figure out what that really is.
Okay, I'm checking it right now. You said page eighty?
Yeah, so yeah, page four is, says thirty-two thousand and page eighty, it says thirty-two thousand six hundred.
Oh, yeah. Now that's probably a typographical error. We'll make that note and make that correction. Thank you.
Okay. And then in the tables, so like on page eighty, it says, it says the minimum square, sorry, minimum ninety foot, okay? But then the drawing shows, associated with that shows maximum.
That was, let's see here, the drawing associated. Oh, yeah. Okay. I see that as well. It is a ninety-foot minimum.
Okay, so then
We'll make that correction as well.
Okay. And I think that same problem follows with all of the other tables and drawings. So five, one, five, two, five, three. All of those, all of the drawings, all the tables say minimum and all the drawings say maximum.
Okay, we will make that note and, and make that correction.
Okay. And then just another really weird, are we currently not allowed to? Are we currently allowing dry storage containers for our commercial properties?
And dry, dry storage containers?
Yeah, if you will, see containers for storage on commercial property.
Um, I, I don't believe so. Outdoor storage is a special use no matter where it is. So it, it's, it's one of those things that Mr. Blue was saying mitigating impact. So if, if a, a business wants to have outdoor storage, then generally speaking, with some limited exceptions, they have to apply for a special use, which ultimately gets approved by the city council.
Okay. All right. It's just, I, I've seen some and, and I was curious is if, because I saw in this one that we weren't going to be allowing storage containers, if you will, on commercial, which is kind of common in commercial locations.
Our, our current code does allow for businesses to apply for temporary outdoor storage up to, I think it's thirty days without, without seeking a special use. Something like a, like Jules' outdoor tent sale with the garden.
Like, no, I'm talking like more like C containers.
Right, no, yeah, I, 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 I hear you. But it's, 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 it's similar to that where they're allowed to have things outdoors for a limited amount of time.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. I see Alderman O'Brien.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Elizabeth, Mr. Blue. Cool is on the great work. Myself and Mr. Possessive were members of Planning and Zoning when this started. So it's great to, to see the fruition. I know it's no small feat. Just, and I'll defer to either one of you. Maybe Elizabeth, if you want to speak and then Mike, from your perspective, knowing that this was done and the amount of time that staff spent and the residents and the firms, is there a best practice that the council should just have in the back of their head? Was waiting twelve years too long? Should, like, should, because there was so many changes and all the great work that you guys did and the teams did. Should this be looked at every five and we just kind of budget in the back of our minds a dollar amount? Like I know the, the write-up, it was, the, the fee was given for the soup to nuts. But is there a best practice that this thing should be dusted up every five years versus waiting twelve?
I'll, I'll, I'll speak a little bit here and then turn it over to Mr. Blue. The last time we were able to find any information that the zoning code was comprehensively updated was thirty or forty years ago. So it, it's been a while and I probably wouldn't wait that long. That being said, we don't anticipate getting absolutely everything a hundred percent perfect the first time. This is meant to be a, a, a living, breathing, evolving document, much like the comprehensive plan. So as staff is using it, as residents, developers, businesses are using it, we'll note where we need to make the changes and, and bring those forward in text amendment form. And, and further than that, I, I defer to Mr. Blue.
Yeah, not to belabor the point, but I, I would agree completely. There's, there is no rule of thumb. When it gets, when it gets old, you know, because you see a lot of the same kind of variation requests. You hear from neighbors and businesses. Staff knows because it's a problem for them. If, if, if the administering the code is a hassle for staff, it's a hassle for your residents to use as well. And so it's, it's worth taking a look at it every year or so, just to kind of see. Maybe it's something the Planning and Zoning Commission does and says, hey, is this still working? And you can put, you, I don't even want to say Band-Aids. You can, you can adjust it on an ongoing basis. The structure you have now is going to be a, a sound structure for quite a while. I, I don't know that I would go thirty or forty years, but no, this is not something you need to completely redo like this every five years.
Great. Thanks so much. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. I did see Joelle's hand pop up. So maybe she has some additional insight to add to that question or something.
I do. Just briefly to build on what Mike Blue said, and one of the things we've already I do, just briefly to build on what, uh, Mike Blue said, um, and one of the things we've already talked to the Planning and Zoning Commission about briefly, is that we would anticipate doing an annual review or update to the, to the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan, just kind of, you know, once a year, take a look, what did we accomplish? Is anything there that, uh, has changed? Have conditions changed? Um, and then to also keep a running tab of the text amendments to the zoning ordinance that we find as we're doing, um, routine reviews of zoning cases. Obviously, the ones that we need to take care of to take care of a particular business's need, we bring forward as part of their application. But the other things that we, that can wait and we can just kind of keep a list of them, we'll bring those back once a year. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to, to further answer the question, John brings up a really good point. The thing that most communities do, there's, there's two things. One is, is to keep track of all of those amendments that need to be made, the things that come up, the things that you find on, as time goes on. And, and the second is a lot of communities will, will keep what they call an interpretation book. So that when ABC Business comes in and say, hey, I don't see my business listed exactly here, can, am I a permitted use? Uh, and then these are important things to keep track of so that you have a consistent set of policies. That may not require updating the code, but what you've got is the consistency built into your, your, um, your implementation process.
Thanks for adding that caveat, Mr. Blue. Um, I do see Alderman Budmats, your hand is up. I don't know if it's legacy or if you have additional questions or comments at this time.
I do. Um, I didn't see the map, the zoning map that was referred to in the, um, in the PowerPoint, um, in the, in, in our packet here. It was, would it be possible to get the new and then the proposed zoning map with what the, with, what those are gonna look like after this was applied so that we could compare those properties before we vote on this?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Joellen, I see your hand as well. Do you have additional information or is it legacy? Okay, perfect. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for discussion at this time? Doesn't look like any other hands are coming up, both, uh, Mike or Elizabeth. So what I'm going to do at this time now is I'm gonna take the, the screen back here. So we can go ahead and continue with, uh, conducting the next series of, of straw votes for this particular, um, discussion item, which is to get the general, uh, sentiment for where we are with, with zoning code amendments and updates. So right now, if I can have a quick show of hands for all those who are in favor of the, the progress and where we stand at this time. Make sure your hands. And I see Alderman Cannon, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Bessesi, Beniziano, Sanoyka, and Diastis. Okay, you can lower your hands. And just out of obligation to ask, anybody opposed to the, the general sentiment or the favor of where we stand? And seeing none, uh, I believe that gives a good indicator of where the council stands on this. And I hope you can utilize this going forward to make the appropriate determination on, uh, the dates to bring this before the council.
Thank you, Mary Gallo. Thank you, City Council Alderman. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So as we move on then from the, uh, zoning code update, we move on to the chipper program survey questions. And for this, uh, Joellen, am I deferring to you?
You are, Mayor. Thank you. Um, the council last looked at this almost exactly a year ago on October fifteenth and twenty nineteen. And there was a lot of items discussed as part of that, um, as part of that conversation. The cost, how to fund this program, uh, who would use it? Um, and I think ultimately, after quite a long conversation, and I did provide a link to the minutes in the backup material, um, for your, for your meeting tonight. But at the end of that conversation, there was a conclusion and consensus from the council that we wanted to first, um, go to the community with a survey and try to determine what the level of interest in providing this survey or the service that had been provided back in twenty-twelve to kind of enhance the brush pickup program that we provide, uh, so that people don't have to bundle and cut, um, brush to specific lengths. And specifically, the program is intended to help those people that might have physical limitations, uh, move forward. So in an effort to kind of move that process forward, we did develop a draft survey that's, um, within your agenda packet tonight. All we're looking for at this point is to determine whether that survey answers the questions that are important to the council, that you feel like we've presented those questions fairly. Um, and see if there's anything else that we want to ask or any other information that we would like to obtain from the survey. Um, if count, with council's direction to proceed tonight, we will work with, uh, probably Melissa and, uh, determining when the best time would be to insert that survey and, and our water bills or some other method of distribution to the community. Leave about four to six weeks to collect the survey results and then come back to you shortly thereafter with the results of that survey and continue the discussion with some of the additional, or addressing some of the additional information that was brought up during the first council discussion. So again, we're looking for council feedback on the survey that was provided in your packet.
Wonderful. Uh, thank you, Joellen. So at this time, by show of hands, I'd like to see those with any questions regarding the content that exists in the survey. Uh, so we'll start this conversation with Alderman Bessesi, whose hand was up, and then Alderman Budmats.
Okay, um, let me go through, let me get back to, shoot. My screen just shifted on the questions. So once again, um, if you remember our prior discussion, uh, the survey was, uh, primarily for a tool for us to get some information regarding, you know, you know, the leanings of our, uh, community. Hopefully, we'll get a large, a large response to it. Uh, and then we'll discuss pros and cons, I guess, at the, after we get results. One thing I did wanna, uh, make sure everyone in the council was aware of is that the costs that were in the write-up, uh, that we had before were basically based on outsourcing the pro- outsourcing this whole thing. They were not based on us doing it ourselves. So we currently do not ha- totally have those numbers. Um, I, from conversations I've had, Mr. Horn, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking in the neighborhood of, um, I think it was like eighteen to twenty-five thousand dollars total would be the actual, uh, expense, which would be, um, less than a fifty cent increase per month on the, uh, uh, on the bill. So, uh, the, and then we will, uh, as far as a comment regarding when to put this in, I would like to get it put in as soon as possible so that we can have this discussion and be able to, uh, potentially do a pilot program at a minimum. Uh, should we get, you know, after, after our discussion, obviously, um, in twenty-twenty-one, uh, and at a bare minimum in twenty-twenty-two, given we may be, you know, given our fund balance right now. Uh, which leaves a couple of questions, um, that I do have for Melissa. Uh, real quick, and I know it's not directly pertaining to this, but if we were to do this and adopt the, uh, the increase that would pay for the program, would we be able to do a pilot this year? In twenty-twenty-one?
The pilot program that, okay. Thank you, Alderman Bessesi. Mm-hmm, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, given that it would not be, we'd be getting the additional revenue to pay for it.
So to answer your question, Alderman, uh, Bessesi, uh, based on any type of survey information and the city council's choosing to, uh, move forward with a pilot program in order to cover the cost of the program, uh, there would be some sort of, uh, rate increase needed in terms of the amount to cover the program. Whatever that amount would be, would be determined on the results of the survey and of course, what the ultimate cost might be.
Okay, and I don't want to digress any farther away from what our topic really should be today. So as far as the questions are concerned, I know some of the other Aldermen have some tweaks. Uh, as far as myself, um, uh, a couple of things. One would be, you know, in the spot where it says, insert, uh, insert link to the website. We should probably make sure it sa- it says the website address. Uh, also on there where it says, uh, to drop it in the City Hall box, I think we should have the address of City Hall so that if someone were choosing to just mail in, or for some unknown reason doesn't know about the white box, uh, they at least know the address of where the white box is. And then lastly, on the, uh, part where it asks for the ward, I know one of my, uh, fellow Aldermen brought up to me about if they're not sure what ward they're in, if we could just have a line there that says, uh, you know, if you're not sure of the ward, please put your street and we can just figure it out.
Uh, you make that a cross street.
Yeah, or our nearest cross street might be the best way. That's a good point. Thank you. And then, uh, oh, there's one other one. If, uh, where we're asking the question about how much do you anticipate putting out? Uh, that's kind of, I mean, that's kind of a difficult question for people. I was wondering if we could put it in terms of actually give them a couple of checkboxes or something that basically say one to two branches or one to two large branches, um, half the parkway. You know, something that's very, uh, easy for people to determine how much they're gonna be putting out, cause I'm not sure that's gonna be, uh, uh, something in putting out the survey over the next eight weeks. We don't know, people probably are not gonna even know what ex- how much exactly they may be putting out. I know some people will say a lot, cause we haven't done this in a long time, but what's a lot? I don't know that we're really getting what we're looking for with that question. So I set up several things, but, uh, you know, well, with the rest of the councilmen talk. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Alderman Bessesi. Uh, the next up would be Alderman Budmats and O'Brien after Budmats.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, regarding this, um, the chipper, I, I really don't have any problem with the whole chipper deal, but I get more phone calls about our regular refuse service than I do the chipper program. And so if we're gonna be sending out a, a survey to residents concerning our refuse program, I really think there needs to be something on there is, would you prefer if we had cans and a way of picking up, um, or meca- the, whatever you wanna call them, totes, um, for garbage and a way of picking them up with our trucks, um, as part of this survey, because we've been dragging our feet, we have no idea, um, how big of an issue it is for our residents. But based on the complaints that I get, it's a bigger issue than the chipper service, um, to my, to the, based on the number of phone calls that I receive. So I'd really like to see if we're gonna go through the trouble of doing a, a survey about our refuse pickup that includes the primary refuse issue that we haven't addressed yet, which is, are we gonna have totes and, and are we gonna have garbage cans that pick up totes or are we gonna still mess around with, you know, craft paper bags? So, um, if we could answer those questions from the residents, that'd be great. Thank you for my, your time.
Thank you, Alderman Budmats. Uh, Alderman O'Brien?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just one thought, I thought the survey looked real good. I'm just wondering too, in referencing the committee, the whole from last year's comments, just down at the bottom where it does say, should it continue with no cost or at most a fifty cent increase? Could we add something there? I don't know on the verbiage, I'll defer to staff on this. It's just that this could impact other projects at hand. I mean, like, clearly, we've gotta see what the results are of the sur- the survey being done, but at least there's an awareness to residents that should this move forward, cause while yes, it might be a fifty cent, which the, the, I did hear back from one resident on this one, they said, hey, free would be great, but fifty cents per bill, they're completely fine with, but also the opportunity cost. And none of us know what that is at this point until we get the survey results. But just that other things may shift based on if residents say they would like this to go forward. Um, then it just might make us, uh, have some decisions to make in terms of we can do chipper, but we won't be able to do Z or whatever that might be. So just kind of a disclaimer there. And then this might be more for, I don't know if it's for, uh, Finance Director Gallagher or Alderman Bessesi. If we do truly call it a pilot, do we incur, and again, we can defer this conversation to the surveys, and do we incur the charge? Because for some reason, if the pilot goes off and we don't adopt a full-time program, then do we take the fifty cents off the bill? And that's just food for thought of, once we get to the financial aspect of it. Do we charge for the pilot, not knowing if it's gonna be successful going forward? Or do we just bite the bullet for the pilot? And then if it's successful, then we put in a additional fee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Uh, you didn't work. Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. Uh, Alderman Sanoyka.
Oh, I was gonna answer his question.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And so, um, I also had some feedback from some residents who had reached out earlier, um, in the year about this program, um, or the potential for this program. And they had, um, some, some questions about the fifty cents. And it sounds like today, um, it, it's quite clear that the fifty cents per month would, which would be about six, six dollars annually, um, per household would be sufficient for this program in-house. And if that's the case, to just make it really clear in the beginning of the survey to state that for about six dollars a year, um, on this bill, that the chipper service would be available to anyone. Because the, then residents had stated that even if they use the service once, within three years, that that would pay for itself based off of what they had been paying for this particular service, uh, and not having to bundle. So, um, that was, that was the only feedback that I wanted to, to share tonight on, on this item. Um, and then I guess my other, but since we're also expanding this to other refuse items, is this an opportunity where we can also perhaps raise this, um, amount if we are struggling to ensure that this fund is, is, is being funded? Sorry, and I, I guess I should direct this question to, to city staff.
So Alderman Sanoyka, this is Finance Director Gallagher. To answer your question, in years past, every single budget year, we run the numbers to make sure that we're covering the fund expenditures each year with the revenues that are coming in. And we also now have a fund balance policy. We wanna make sure that we're in parameters between thirty and fifty percent of the fund balance, uh, policy. So if, for instance, uh, we are looking at future increases, we have to run all of that data to make sure that we're covering all the costs of the fund. I don't know if that answers your question per se, but that's, I just wanted to make sure that it's looked at every single year. And should the city council desire to increase costs to the refuse fund? Remember, the last rate increase was, was back, um, in twenty-fourteen. That's the last time that it was increased. So we've, we've had the same rate because we've done different items in the fund to make sure that we've kept the costs where we can. And we've made sure that we're in parameters with our fund balance policy.
Alderman Sanoyka, I'm sorry, is your question more geared towards whether we have enough information now to ask a question about what fee people might be able or willing to consider as part of this survey? Or are you asking the question for later discussion?
Uh, I'll clarify. So the, the first item that I had mentioned was, um, that the limited feedback I had received from residents who are very excited about this kind of a program, uh, made the suggestion that in addition to having, um, and I'm on the, the packet electronic page one nine ninety-seven. On that question seven, where it's mentioned, I support nominal month, um, I support nominal monthly increases of fifty cents or less in garbage rates necessary to cover costs associated with the program. They asked me if that's the cost of the program is a fifty cents increment, uh, or a fifty cent increase per month, then to state that that fifty cent increase is what it would cost for the program. Uh, or a fifty cent increase per month, then to state that that fifty cent increase is what it would cost for the program. And so before I go on to those, the two other questions, I guess I want, I want to clarify Assistant Director. If that is is accurate.
I'm, um, Rob, if you're available, I'd like to ask you to review that question with Alderman Sanoka. I know the last time it was discussed. We had a large conversation about it, and it was as Alderman Bessesi indicated, uh, anticipated that that was. The numbers that we used were used because it was comparable to the outsourcing. Have we done enough analysis to feel comfortable that that number? Uh, would be the cost that we would need to charge for the service moving forward if we did it in-house?
Yeah, um, Alderman Sanoka, you know, I hate to say I don't know for sure, um, because that doesn't help you. Um, it was my recollection that the costs associated. Um, with the fifty cent, where the, where the fifty cent came from was if the city were to pay half. Of the costs associated with the program, and then the resident paid the other half. With the fifty cent increase to the refuse bill. But again, as Alderman Bessesi indicated earlier, I think he is accurate in stating. That that dollar amount was used um, as a factor in comparison. In comparing it to um, outsourcing, the outsourcing costs. So, um, uh, to to Alderman Bessesi's um, um, point. The fifty cent fee likely would cover our direct costs. But I don't know a hundred percent sure, or I'm not a hundred percent sure what our actual direct costs were as part of that. Memo, because we also included, uh, uh, you know, labor costs and things like that. Which might not be uh, included in our future um, analysis of the program.
Then my follow-up to that is if if after re-reviewing this, that fifty cents stands. The feedback that I'm relaying from my residents is that that is. A selling point in favor of the program and to highlight that beyond just question seven and putting that in the body of the survey to say that. The total cost of this program would be an in, an annual increase of six dollars, which which to those who use the program. Um, or haven't used the program, but for those who have used, um, not the specific program, but who've had refuse taken, say that that is. Um, a wildly excellent deal, because they said that if they use that once, that service once through the city, that it would pay for itself. Within three years. So that was the feedback I was providing, providing there. Um, but the follow-up question beyond this, because Alderman Bud Matts had brought up utilizing this opportunity to gain additional information on refuse. I'm piggybacking off of this to um, the wider issue of ensuring that this and. And forgive me, is this an enterprise fund, the garbage fund? Yes, okay, to ensure that the enterprise fund is meeting its fund balances and that it is a healthy fund. And if the only way for us to make sure that this stays healthy is to increase. Ex- or to increase fees. Is this an opportunity where we can um, identify what, which fees are. Uh, acceptable for residents and which ones are not. So if it's fifty cents for the chipper program. But if we increased it by a dollar or doubled that, and that would put us in a really good place going forward. For this enterprise fund, then I'm, I'm suggesting that. This could also be an opportunity for us to explore that as well. And so, um, Finance Director Gallagher. I understand that we're always making sure that we're just covering expenses for this fund, but is is there any reason for us? To not utilize this as an opportunity to ensure that, or to to see if we can increase. Uh, or potentially increase or see what the threshold or limit test is for those increases?
We, we can certainly, Alderman uh, Sanoka, certainly add a survey uh, question to that end. Uh, it is important to test the uh, gauge the temperature of what folks are accustomed to. I think any type of rate increases that the city has done in the past has always been incremental over time. Has always been making sure that you're not raising rates to the point of not being able to have residents pay those rates. Over time as well, and balancing everything along the way to make sure that your operating costs, particularly in the refuse fund, and then also the. The capital costs that are included in the refuse fund. When I say capital, I mean that we have a chargeback going out of the. Uh, refuse fund over to the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, so that we're making sure that we're covering all of those types of costs. Um, it, again, when. The refuse fund years ago, actually, the rate, the monthly rate was a couple dollars higher than it is now. It was through careful planning to bring down the refuse rate, actually. Uh, it was around thirty-two dollars, I believe, and we brought it down to twenty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents per month. Through a lot of different uh, items that were done at that time. My point being is that incremental change to a rate has to be done thoughtfully and through a planning process. We've been able to hold rates the same through many different areas of planning. And so since twenty-fourteen, for the past six years and for this budget for twenty-twenty-one, that'll be seven years. We've had the same monthly rate. So to your point, yes, to gather the information to gauge the. You know, the um, kind of the temperature uh, of, you know, what are residents comfortable with? Uh, as far as rate increases, I think that would be a good idea. Long story short. We probably should add a question to the survey so we can get that information.
Thank you, Finance Director, and I, I do want to emphasize, I'm not suggesting that we have to necessarily raise rates overall. I just want to make sure that we're being cognizant of this opportunity. Um, given our fund balance um, requests going forward. Um, that's all that I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoka. Uh, I see Alderman Bessesi and then Alderman Cannon.
Yes, um, first thing I want to state, I would be in opposition of putting any extra question regarding that onto this survey. I think we're mixing, we're mixing issues. Here, and I think it could start to become confusing to some people. Um, the more we lengthen this, this survey. I also feel for, that we should not put it on there, because we have absolutely no idea whatsoever. How much we would want to be raising this. From what I understand, this could be six digits at least that we're going to have to pay to do that garbage can thing. So. Right now, I think it would be premature to add any, any questions regarding that on here. I do believe we should survey to determine what the appetite is. Um, but there's absolutely no way we would ever put the garbage can thing into two thousand twenty-one. Uh, given our current budget without increasing a tax somewhere. Because as, as Melissa said, um, we would have to borrow from. We'd have to do stuff with the vehicle fund and have a payback for the vehicle fund and and do various other gymnastics. That potentially may not be looked on too favorably. Uh, to be able to accommodate that. So right now, I just think that we're very premature. And asking the questions regarding uh, the garbage cans without totally knowing. What the cost of that is, and I don't want to delay this survey from going out. Hopefully within the next. The next bill even. So, uh. Um, and then on another point, I would agree with Alderman Sanoka in. Uh, highlighting that this is only a six-dollar increase per year, and per year annually. We may even just want to rephrase the question even, instead of saying uh, fifty cents per month. Definitely highlight in there that it would only be six, six dollars per year spread out over twelve months. Um, but uh, uh, I personally would be in fin- just so you, everyone knows for the record. I would be in favor of. Retrofitting and putting in the garbage cans. I just think that it's premature to put it out on the survey right now. Without knowing. Totally what we're getting into. Uh, so that's it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Bessesi. I, I can see the pros and cons to your uh, sentiment regarding. Muddying the waters from chipper to the overall refuse collection conversation. But if there's a way that staff could, could identify with one or two, even just one additional question to gauge the appetite. I don't see detriment in that. And so what I'll do is, I know we're definitely deviating from the specific survey as it stands, but I, I'll put a straw vote out to see if. If it is appropriate to incorporate uh, the question about uh. Trash uh, receptacles and that, just in the survey while we're on the subject of having. Uh, some sort of refus take place, whether it's foliage or trash. Um, just to see what the, the council decides on that. Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of order on, on Mr. Bessesi's last comments. We, we know from the Vehicle Replacement Committee that it would cost us at least forty thousand dollars per truck. To retrofit them, to put the scissors on them. We were told in the past, we looked at this before, but buying garbage cans, that it'll cost somewhere between. Sixty-five and eighty dollars per can, depending on the sizes for each household. So I guess, Mr. Mayor, one of the questions I would just like to ask, how many surveys would actually go out in this mailing? Do you know the answer to that, or does someone there know the answer to that, or even give me a ballpark figure?
Does staff have an indication? I was on the assumption it'd be this one survey is the, the one survey to go out.
I, I was under the impression it was six thousand homes. That would be.
You are correct, Alderman Bessesi. Six thousand homes would be surveyed.
Okay, with, with, with that said, thank you for that information. I wasn't sure what the number was. I thought it might be a little bit less than that, but that's fine. Um, so I guess the question I would ask, Mr. Mayor, is so what, what would be the criteria of, of this survey being success?
Alderman Cannon, I lost you halfway through successful criteria of this survey being successful.
I just lost, did you hear me again?
No, I just heard up to criteria for the survey being successful.
Well, I guess, uh, here's my point, Mr. Mayor. We, we sent out the six thousand people. If we get back two thousand and say they want it, but four thousand people didn't send it back, what does that mean?
Well, like any other survey, what it does, it gives you a baseline indicator of what the trend would be, which way the trend leans.
Well, what's, what's the trend then? I mean, if that's not even half the people respond positively, does that mean it's a goal or not a goal?
What it means is that you can, you can extrapolate that whatever the results are, the broader audience who would have participated. Can safely assume that the majority would go in that same correlated path. I mean, as far as like market research goes, that.
Does that mean we would do the service then, just because?
No, what it means is that the appetite for the service is there, so gosh darn it, we better start figuring out what the, what the benefits and savings are. From implementing such a thing, so we can go ahead and identify how to make the investment into it. That's, that's what we should do. I've been trying to get these trash cans, this, this set up since February. Uh, if, if I'm not mistaken with my internal conversations.
I'm talking about, I thought we were talking about the, the, the chipper service.
Yeah, the chipper service, you asked about the survey results regarding the, the trash cans, am I?
No, I didn't know. I was talking about the chipper service. So what would it take for us to institute that as, as the for going forward?
The, the response rate would, would be the indicator. So if only two thousand people, now correct me if I'm wrong, but only if. Only two thousand people responded, but the majority of those two thousand responded. You can safely assume that a majority will participate in this. It doesn't mean they're going to participate in taking a survey. But it means they'll participate in the activity of utilizing a chipper service. But, uh, what, well, you bring up a very important point here. Are we, are we sending these out to multifamily homes in areas that don't have? Uh, cheaper services, or have we omitted all of those homes?
Um, the plan, Mayor, I'm sorry, I was unmuted, so I started talking. Um, the, the plan was to send these out to every customer that receives refuse service. That's what the six thousand. Uh, households, um, uh, Finance Director Gallagher referred to indicates. Um, a- as, as we should, because their rates would be affected, so um. Uh, so yes, there would be townhomes, not, not apartment buildings or condominium complexes, but. Townhomes would be part of the survey that we currently serve uh, with our refuse services.
Okay, so when performing the analysis on the results, that would have to be taken into consideration as to what their response is. Hopefully, they say no, because they, they wouldn't need that service, being in a townhome environment with HOA and maybe already receiving that service. But that, that's, that's part two for the analysis component. And as far as I know about market research and surveys and data analysis. We go based on what the feedback is provided as the indicator for which direction we should go. If majority say no, then. Majority means we shouldn't pursue this. It's just not financially feasible or operationally feasible. If the majority are in favor of this. Then chances are the majority are going to utilize the service.
Well, you know, Mr. Mayor, going back historically, when we did have the service back, you know, eight or ten years ago. I think the last year we had, I think that's the survey number that I was told, somewhere between fourteen and sixteen percent of the households used the service. So that meant more than eighty percent did not use it. And everybody else's fee would still go up. You know, the, the problem I have with this is we're, we're asking, ask everybody to, to pay for this. It's not a huge amount of money, but you know what? We have the highest garbage rates of anybody in the northwest suburbs. Look it up. We're not, we're not even close to anybody else. We have the most expensive service out there. We do a great job. Our people work hard. We, we pay, we pay a premium for it. Other cities are getting their garbage service for less than twenty dollars a month. So we're paying thirty, and then this will go up from there. And if we do the, we do the can service, then it's another whole, another whole ball of wax there. But uh, I'm not for this. I think, you know, I think our service right now is very adequate. So.
And it's my. Thank you for your opinion, and I think we revisited this opinion the last time I brought this survey up. I really believe you should allow your residents to speak for the, the situation and not your opinion. Uh, this is the last time I sent out the informal opinion. No.
It's our resident. Opinion.
No, we're supposed to provide the opinion based on our residents. It's not, it's not our individual opinion. It's our, our opinion based on the consensus of the resident feedback we receive. So allow the data to come back from the survey gone out to the residents in your ward, and if they're in favor of it, I think you should support it. Alderman Dasis. All right, Alderman Bud Matts.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, in response, um, to Alderman Cannon's comments, I mean. Honestly, only like fifteen to twenty percent of the, of the voters turned out for the last council election, but. Based on the majority of those who voted, we sit here. So I guess the, the point is, is that. The ma- the majority of the residents are probably not going to return this poll. So we just have to work with the, we just have to work with the feedback that we do get. And move forward with it, just like we work with the voters who, who vote whoever they vote in. And, and, and even though the majority of the citizens may not choose to vote in the election. Um, those who do decide what's going to have to happen, uh, moving forward as a council. And so the majority of the responses that we get on the survey will, will help us decide where we go forward if the chipper program or not. Or a refuse program with, with totes or not. Um, so let the citizens who want to participate in the process help, help guide what happens here. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Dasis.
Thank you. Uh, my question is regarding the, the six thousand surveys. Um, my award is uh, probably more unique, uh, other than possibly the fifth award in that. We have some single-family homes, we have quite a few uh, condominiums. Uh, and townhomes, and I, I guess my question is, who gets the surveys? I mean, I've got rentals in my ward, uh, and, and does the, um, the building owner? Get, get the survey and vote, uh, respond on behalf of his whole unit? I, I'm just kind of curious about that because of the makeup of my award, and I want to make sure that it's represented properly.
Alderman Dasis, I can field that question. This is Finance Director Gallagher. If we were to insert the survey with the utility bill, which would be the most economical way to do that. Uh, that would go with all utility bills, and yes, some, some multifamily, it would not apply to them, and they could just discard it. Uh, we've done that in the past where things just don't apply to certain residents or businesses, and they would just not respond to the survey. We could even put something like that in the survey or on the survey. We could even put something like that in the survey or on the survey in the final form. And just as a secondary note, just to add to the conversation, should the survey move ahead again for the chipper service, the next available opportunity would be for the December utility bill. Because the other, the November utility bill, we've already completed, and there's no other further inserts for this month. So just wanted to add that too. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman DeSantis?
No, like I said, my, my only concern was because of the amount of townhomes that I have in this ward as compared to the other wards who may have more single-family homes. I just want to make sure that everybody is represented properly so that I can make the correct decision based on what my ward wants.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, to, to maybe help answer, answer Alderman DeSantis's questions, I could suggest that we add a question that would request that they provide data, whether they reside in a townhome or a single family, you know, what kind of structure they live in. That way, if people do respond and, and they have an opinion one way or the other, we can sort the, the responses in a way that would let you know which homeowners are responding in which way.
Okay, good.
That could be appropriate. Are we trying to stay, you know, like under, under a series of ten questions or something, just for the sake of trying to?
We're trying to keep it to one way.
Yeah, enable people to take it.
We want to make sure that, that people answer it so we can reformat it and move some things around and, and come up with a way that, that it works. But I think adding that question will help us make sure that we're, if we, if we get those people responding, and chances are they won't, but unless we ask the question, we won't be able to analyze the data properly, given that it's sent to everybody. And I, I think, you know, the, the alternative would be to try to figure out a way to only send it to single-family homes, and I think that would, you know, add a complexity that we probably don't have time to work on right now, so.
True. Thank you for that. Alderman Budmats, your hand is either still up or, or back up. I just want to check before moving on to Alderman Bessessi. Alderman Bessessi?
Yes, thank you. I, I think we got a lot of good points brought up. I think to what Alderman DeSantis was saying, there is a question on the survey that says, do you rent or own? We could probably just reword that question. Asking, what do they, what do they live in? Do they live in a single-family home? Do they live in a townhome? Do they live in a, you know, the various different things? And just kind of reword, reword that a little bit. As far as it, as far as, as far as trying to get to that type of an answer. The other thing is, these would actually, to, to the point, I think Melissa was making, or sorry, Gallagher. These are going to the people who are most likely paying the bill. So even if they are in a townhome, I would think we would want them to get it so that they would at least be able to check the box, no, I would never use this. Because it is really, I mean, it is, it is an extra fee on everyone who gets this bill. Lastly, it's my understanding, we, I mean, we're doing this survey. It's not necessarily a referendum. It's to gather some information so that when we go back to talk about this again, about, about actually doing the program, that we have some feedback from our residents regarding what they might want to do, what they, you know, and what they, what they have an appetite for, basically, regarding this topic. So, so it's, to me, you say it's going to go out in December. So we're pretty much shot for 2021, even if we want to do this. So I think that's pretty much it. I'll, I'll save the rest of my comments for the next time we talk about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Bessessi. Joellen, your hands up?
Just one final thought. I know hearing Finance Directors comment about the survey going out in December and the need to try and get the information out and, and hopefully get a good response. It is hard to get people to respond to surveys. So what I would suggest in, in the, in the November timeframe or the time between now and when the survey goes out, that we try to advertise it, you know, the, the council meetings we can, and the committee, the whole meetings, we can advertise that the surveys are going out, ask people to participate, that it's important in helping us make decisions. We can put some things on our website and, and talk about some of the newsletters, but especially to the elected officials, as you talk to your constituents, I, I think just letting people know that it's coming and to look for it in December may help us get a better response rate and, and give us data that you'll feel more comfortable making decisions on. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And then just to close this out with the la, the last question here. Staff, you have sufficient notes from council feedback on what changes need to be made specific to the, the content related to the chipper service? We good on that?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
Okay, and then, you know, I, I don't know if there's going to be a, a small paragraph at the top for the resident reader of the survey to say the city is looking to improve our service offerings or what have you. But at that point, while we are talking to the resident about refuse and removal, I do want to put that straw vote out there to see to incorporate the one question about canister garbage cans for refuse pickup, just to see if we can get the appetite, council approval. So-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry to, to interrupt. Would it be possible to just put that on a more of a separate survey?
It's, you know, it's really difficult to get participants to conduct this survey. And if we're putting out a seven or eight question survey, if we can include one more line without overburdening the resident and the reader on the survey, I think it's appropriate to take it back and just put the checkbox next to it for our knowledge.
Yeah, we'll just need to put a very small paragraph over the top so that they know that we're changing subjects.
Well, I mean, the thing is-
The whole top part of this talks about the, the chipper cert, the chipper service. We just want to put a little something on the bottom saying, you know, that we're also looking at potentially doing the garbage can thing and what level, what level would you be, would you be comfortable with increase in order to pay for this service?
Honestly, you don't even need to get into the finances for the, 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 that part, the, the finance for chipper service program, fine for right now. Honestly, for the, the receptacle and the mechanical arm pickup, you know, totes, just need to know if there are a majority of households that are interested in that. That, that's enough from our side. We have some, some numbers on our side from what the cost to integrate the mechanics into our trucks. What we don't have is the long-term numbers for what the financial value and benefits are for implementing these things. So we still have to wait for that. But if there's a majority of the population that says I'm not in favor of having another tote, then there's no reason to even run down the road of analysis to see what the long-term benefits are.
Makes sense. Thank you. You go ahead. Let's go ahead with the straw vote. Sorry for interrupting.
It's okay. Just one sentence, you know? So those in favor of incorporating the line about totes for, for garbage? Let's see, Alderman Bessessi, O'Brien. Hold on a second. Brian, Louisiana, Budmats, Sanoyka, DeSantis, thank you. And then Joel, and I see your hand up. I'll get to it in a moment if, if there is a question. Those opposed to incorporating the tote on the survey, Alderman Cannon. Okay, thank you. And then Joellen, did you have a question or comment?
No, sorry, I forgot to put my hand down.
That's okay. Alderman Bessessi, I see your hand is up.
Yes, I was opposed on the last motion. I just couldn't get my hand down quick enough to.
Okay. So Cannon and Bessessi are opposed. The other names I mentioned are in favor. All right. Thank you, Joellen, for putting together this survey with everyone whom you worked on it with, and then hopefully take the feedback into consideration, move this forward. Let's move on to the next item beyond the chipper service program, which is going to be Manager Crumstock and Chief Nowacki giving an explanation or update on the expansion of the Police Department's social services outreach.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. Obviously, it's almost eleven o'clock, but this is, as you stated, it isn't for informational purposes and status for obviously residents to know what has transpired with some of the discussions. To keep this really short before I turn it over to Chief Nowacki, what the overall result is that staff is working and will work with the collective bargaining agreement, but there will be a second social worker. Obviously, there's some ordinances that need to be approved by the City Council, but we also have to have some discussions with that, too. The overall for the City of Rolling Meadows is an increase of point five or half in FTE. And again, money for this for the 2021 budget does come out of the manager's hold, and we are aggressively looking for grants to continue with this work and with this additional changes. So again, I'm trying to keep it as short as possible because I know the council has gone through this. Again, it's really only in for informational purposes. But again, for the City of Rolling Meadows, there will now be a coordinator and a social worker in that division in the Police Department. It's an increase of point oh five FTEs, and then obviously there's some additional work that we have to do on our side for the HR and obviously some of the other pieces with that. That's my really quick informational update, and I do turn that over to Chief Nowacki if he wants to add anything briefly before we open that up.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, great. The City Manager pretty much summarized what's going on. Obviously, at the last committee, the whole meeting, the City Council gave direction to add a police social worker. So we've been very active in making that happen. I have been working on applying for some grants to fund the position. So that's going pretty well. I'm very optimistic that we'll be able to get funding to either pay for most, if not all of that position. I'm also currently cross-training two of our part-time employees to learn the duties of one of our full-time records personnel. The reason I'm doing that is she does have a master's degree in social work. She does have experience in social work. She's also bilingual. So prior to moving to a full-time position, which we're working on with some labor and union issues, we will be able to have her assist Dr. Niavez with police social work. I'm hoping to do about twenty additional hours a week until we're able to make that position permanent and a full-time position. So I don't know if anybody, like any of the council members has any questions, I'd be happy to hopefully answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Manager Crumstock, for providing the, the update here. It's exciting to see that we have new social, social services and social workers coming into the community for the residents. I do see Alderman Sanoyka's hand, so Alderman Sanoyka, floor is yours.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, and thank you, City Manager, for giving this update. I have a question for city staff on how our, just how our grant writing works on the, with the city overall, because working on the Capital Improvements Committee, grants are just a part of life. Like, it's, it's known that Public Works is going to try and identify ITAP and STP grant funding for all of our projects, and that's just, and that's just with all the planning documents. What is the relationship between our grant writer and all of our other departments?
So I can briefly give an update on that. So our current grant writer, he minds for all different things. So even in the budget, when he looked at there's two main line items in the general fund that are being paid for that, he's actually mining all the time for us. And when I mean mining, if he sees something that might be public safety related, or if he sees something that might be, even with this COVID-19, if he saw something that might be good for us, or something that might be how it needs to be worded for Fed. So he's continuously looking for us, even though it's really two line items. He's always looking for the benefits for the City of Rolling Meadows. And it might be maybe another municipality, he's working with them on something. He's just going to give us a quick heads up and say, hey, maybe you want to think about this kind of grant, or I'm working on this one for a Public Works item. But he's always mining and looking for the best interest in any kind of grants that we could look for.
So then as a follow-up, do we have a, a quota system? Do we expect something like, you know, there's at least two or three grants that are being submitted every Friday by the end of the week for various programs throughout the city? Or how is, how is that output managed and, and, and measured?
Alderman Sanoyka, I can take that question. This is Finance Director Gallagher. As City Manager Crumstock mentioned, the grant consultant that is discussed is under contract with the city. The primary focus is public safety, so police and fire grants. He does, as City Manager Crumstock mentioned, also mines for other types of grants. It really is just the availability of federal, state, and county funding, what is out there. So it's not an, an actual grant that you're doing a couple times a week or something to that end. Most recently, Chief Nowacki just let us know this week that a new grant came on board, and they've been approved for it for the Police Department. So it really just depends on the availability of the funding that's out there and what ones that are, we are eligible to apply for.
So no grant, no overall criteria, plus how many we do.
Right, there's not a quota or a criteria per se to your question. It's what's available and what we're able to apply for, for eligibility.
Um, thank you for that.
You know, and Chief Nowacki can discuss the social worker piece, but I do know that we got an update this last week from the grad consultant that he's actively looking at the availability and the eligibility to fund this social worker piece. And Chief Nowacki, if you have anything else to update on that item?
Actually, I do. Thank you. I did receive an email actually just a couple hours ago regarding, it's called a Voca grant. It's to pay, I think it's a three-year funding for a police social worker. I think the minimum award is seventy-five thousand dollars. They did, like I said, send an email saying that they did receive our intent that we're looking to apply for that. I have been obtaining some letters of support, which go along with the grant, and there's some, several other information that I've been working on with Dr. Niavez to provide to our grant consultant to finalize that package and get that forwarded for our grant application. So we're always looking for grants, Department of Justice grant also. We're applying for to receive some, hopefully be awarded to receive some funds to also help pay for an additional police social worker.
Thank you for that context. I have no further questions at this point. I would just end with looking forward to the 2022 budget, or I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right, 2022 already, we're in. To, and see, I, I'm sure that there are many other financing opportunities, given the, the trends that we're starting to see at the municipal level, to perhaps solidify funding going forward, so we don't have to necessarily depend on the managerial hold for these, for these social services going forward. And, and that's all that, that I have at this point. Thank you.
This mute button is not working. Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. Again, thanks, Chief, Manager Crumstock. Are there any other questions or comments for them on this informational purpose only presentation that they just provided? And if not, we will move on to the final topic here tonight. The holiday tree on the city-owned property located on Kirchhoff Road. And I do believe this is going to go to Director Horn at this time, correct?
It is, Mayor. I don't know why I, I, on all long evenings, I get the last item. So I will keep this as brief as I can. As the council member call, at the September committee, the whole meeting, we had presented some information regarding the, the expenses for the Christmas tree. And at that time, an Alderman brought up a request that we investigate installing a what discussion indicated that the, the temporary kind of portable tree that we received. If you, what discussion, uh, indicated, uh, that the, the temporary kind of portable tree that we received. Um, at the intersection of Owl and Kirchhoff Road. Um, in lieu of the work that, uh, was originally proposed at Central Road and Barker Avenue. Um, at that time, it was requested that staff gather some information related to electrical. Uh, and Commonwealth Edison costs, in, in addition to try to determine, uh, existing resources. That may have been expended or decorations that may have been purchased but not used at this time. Because of the, the timing of the request, uh, staff prepared a staff report. Uh, that was put into the October thirteenth, uh, memo. Uh, basically, or excuse me, in the October thirteenth, uh, council packet. Um, for the councils use to try and, uh, um, get the information to you as soon as possible. Um, because the, uh, the timing, um, to get this work done is, is actually really, uh, really, um, condensed. Um, the only information that really has changed since then is, uh, we have since, uh, gotten a, a proposal. From an engineering or a electrical firm that, um, has given us a price quote to do the work. Um, entirely in this condensed timeframe, uh, that work, uh, proposed is, uh, just over ten thousand dollars. Um, i- if you might recall, the, uh, original proposed work was somewhere between thirty-five and hundred and forty-five hundred dollars. Um, that, that, uh, included staff doing the lion's share of the labor work. So, uh, this, uh, if we went, uh, with this plan, it would cost us, uh, about twice what it would have cost. If, if we did it, um, without this condensed timeframe, um, and a hundred percent by the contractor. We, uh, as the memo indicated, we have purchased a lot of the, um, decorations that were intended specifically for the Barker. And Central Road location, and we've made most of those electric, electrical improvements already. In anticipation for the holiday season. Um, so with, with that information, um, we provided a, a question at the, uh, end of the, uh, memo. For direction, uh, basically asking whether the city council wants us to continue to pursue. Um, installing this temporary tree at the corner of Owl and Kirchhoff Road. If that's the case, we certainly feel like we may be able to do that. But it will require staff to bring a resolution to the city council from the one electrician. We were able to get a, a, a commitment from, to do the work quickly. Um, in addition to that, the one kind of, um, wild card in the whole, whole project is. Uh, our, um, city manager's office has been in communication with our representative at Commonwealth Edison. And they have assured us that they will make this, uh, connection a high priority. Um, with the caveat that there are no, um, bad weather issues. That would deter them from doing that, um, anywhere in the region. So for example, if, uh, if Tennessee had an ice storm that required our commed crews to go down to Tennessee. That may impact our ability to get the electrical connected, um, to light the tree this year. Uh, just because we're, we're talking about a matter of less than a month, um, right now. So, uh, that's really out of our control. We've, I think, as a staff, done everything we can do to get a commitment from commed to do it quickly. But again, that's, tho- those are the parameters that we have right now. And, right, uh, we just need to see, you know, what the council's, um, wishes are as far as whether we. Pursue the, the, um, Barker Central Road area or do both. And try to install the, uh, electrical for the temporary tree at Owl and Meadow as well.
All right. Thank you, Director Horn. Uh, at this time, we should open the floor for questions and discussion about this. I see Alderman Sanoyka, your hand was up first. You got the floor. Uh, okay. Uh, looks like Alderman's like, uh, put the hand down, Alderman. Yeah, are you there?
Yeah, sorry, mute button. So I was gonna say, since it's, um, so late in the game, um, and we can't get that confirmation from, from commed. I would recommend that this be, um, that the Owl and Kirchhoff location be dropped. Um, and also given the other austerity measures that we're pursuing. And that, um, Public Works has already purchased and scheduled time for the Barker and Central location, that those plans continue. And, uh, as, as, as they've already been incorporated with other work. However, um, I would like to see some follow-up on this particular item. Um, because this seems like a, 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 a good long-term opportunity to apply the comprehensive plan. Um, you know, our, our ten-year comprehensive plan recommends strengthening, um, resident sense of place. And enhancing community pride and economic development by using strategies like thematic streetscapes, landscaping and wayfinding. To highlight Rolling Meadows assets. And we have some unique challenges to this that we can't necessarily control, like Palatine Street addresses. And the bifurcation of the city by Route fifty-three. But, um, I think that we as a council have an opportunity here to utilize winter lighting. Uh, decorations as a strategy to improve the, the city's sense of place. And, and bring together disparate economic corridors and sites through cohesive theming. So, i- ideally, a visitor would recognize a similar festive atmosphere, whether they're on Algonquin Road or Kirchhoff or Plum Grove. Um, and I also think that this requires a, a more strategic and detailed approach than, um. Then, then what we currently have now where we're just kind of just choosing one place, right? Um, so I think that, um, last year, community development provided multiple sites for the council to choose. As kind of a home base for holiday tree lighting. Um, and in the future, instead of choosing one location, I propose that, uh, that. Community development in collaboration with the Assistant to the City Manager, the Community Events Foundation and the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, consider a long-term plan, more like two, three or five years, um, to, to address the, the maintenance. The storage and, and the theme of these winter decorations and streetscapes to both promote a sense of place. And just give us some consistency and predictability going forward, I think, as a city. Um, so over the course of the next five years, how might the city either like, either focus or expand its winter decorations? For the major corridors and thoroughfares, um, and what kind of infrastructure improvements needs to be made in order to make that happen? So, for example, at Kirchhoff and Owl, we know we needed an electrical hookup. And we know that we can do it for less than half the price than outsourcing it. Um, as long as that time and labor is, is scheduled, then that's something we can incorporate over the long term. So at least that site is an option, at least while that site is with the city for the foreseeable future. And this isn't something I think the, the, the council can necessarily, uh, create. This would be something we'd be looking to community development to bring back in, in, you know, January or February of twenty twenty-one. And, um, and maybe that means, you know, ultimately, when all the numbers are crunched. That we don't have the staff time to be able to light up every single corridor. Um, and I think that, uh, that's important to know. Maybe then we just have like a, a moving cycle. We know it's going to be at a different location every time. Like, that would be another type of compromise that we could make with the costs that we have. Or if we wanted to go completely decked out every ten years and then say, here's where everything is going to be lit, lit up. Um, or if there are some technology, technology advancements that we can use, um, in order to be able to incorporate theming. Not just for the holidays, but maybe for Halloween or Saint Patrick's Day, that would, would be really easy to incorporate, such as LED lights or something. Sky is the limit to come with ideas and bring back to the council. And that way, we, you know, and. I also don't want this to be a lost opportunity for just winter lighting. I think that talking about theming, talking about streetscapes, talking about the comprehensive plan is going to be helpful for anything else. That comes to the council, um, like, you know, deciding if we want to go with dark lights, um, on some of our pathways. Or if we need some improvements on, on, on pavement. If we have a set plan on, on what that theme and that branding is. Then we won't necessarily have to have so much back and forth when it comes to council. So that's a lot. I know it's really late, um, but happy to field questions on that from staff.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. So just to recap what I heard, that basically it's your request to, uh, drop the Kirchhoff Road location. This year specifically, but in conjunction request that city staff provide a, a more long-range holiday plan. For the festive ambiance around the community and bring that before the council. Is that what I?
Excellent summary. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I agree with, uh, Alderman Sanoyka that I think, uh, for this year, across the street doesn't make much sense. It's just way too much money. Um, I did a little research that I passed on to staff. They could, they could buy a ten-foot tree and have it planted and guaranteed for fifteen hundred dollars, so. But then we have to hook up all electricity and stuff. I think going forward, I guess I would like to see something done on, on Kirchhoff. If we're gonna consider this still our main shopping district and our main business district. Um, I don't know about you, but I'm getting awfully concerned about some of the things that have happened on Kirchhoff in the last year. Um, the American Bagel store is sitting empty because no new leasers come through. We've lost Taco Bell. Now we've lost Dunkin' Donuts. I think maybe as a city, we better start looking, figure out ways to make that area more attractive, to get more people downtown. Or as what we call downtown anyhow. Um, it is a big concern of mine. I don't hear other people talking about it, so that concerns me. Maybe people just don't care about it. I'm not really sure. But I'm not really interested in going forward with this, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate all the staff work within this. I just think it's too expensive at this time. And I guess going forward, I would agree with a lot of the thoughts that Ms. Ms. Noyka, uh, offered. I guess I'm really confused as to how Central Road in Barker have all of a sudden become the central point for a Christmas forest. It's just, um, we haven't spent any of those resources on Kirchhoff. And I think we could have done that and made it a lot nicer, but that's just an opinion. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Alderman Cannon. Thank you for bringing up this location and then thank you for acquiescing to take it down, uh, from staff's radar for this year. Uh, I think they can appreciate that and we can respect the, the, the need to not sink money in there. At this specific point in time. Um, I do see Alderman Veniziano's hand, so I'll let the discussion continue. And then I just want to put out a straw vote to add closure to this discussion. Alderman Veniziano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to verify with staff, at this time, there's no events planned for. Um, the Christmas tree lighting. Is that correct?
You are correct. There is nothing scheduled at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Uh, thank you. Anything else from any member of the council, uh, on this subject here? Alderman Veniziano, I'm gonna put your hand down real quick, just to, uh, get ready for a straw vote. Um, so just right now, to make it officially unofficial, uh, all those in favor of abandoning this Kirchhoff Road location this year. Please show your hand to abandon, uh, this initiative for this specific year. All right, we have Veniziano, Sanoyka, Cannon, O'Brien, Vessesi, Bud Matts and Diastis. Uh, thank you. All those in favor or, or those who, who are opposed to that and think we should continue pursuing the Kirchhoff Road this year. Don't think I'm gonna see anybody, but I have to call it. And then, uh, just quick show of hands for those in favor of, of having staff provide. The council with a long-range holiday plan for the festive ambiance, uh, seasonally throughout our, our city. At different corridors and some matrix thereof. All right, uh, so that's Alderman Vessesi, Bud Matts, O'Brien, Cannon, Sanoyka, Diastis, Veniziano. Uh, thank you. And now the last one is, uh, specifically about Central Road and Barker. Um, those in favor of allowing staff to just continue with the decorations in that location based on the work that was done last year. To implement the initiation of it and then some of the work that was done for this, what was going to be the next year. Those in favor of having staff still roll out the decorations in that location at the museum on Central Road and Barker. So it's Alderman, Bud Matts, Vessesi, Diastis, Sanoyka, O'Brien, Cannon and Veniziano. Uh, now staff, specifically Director Horn, is there anything further you need from Direction on Council regarding, uh, the Barker and Central Road area? Laying out the decorations for this year?
No, that was a, a perfect explanation and direction. So staff has everything we need to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, uh, quick timeline. I know there's probably a million other priorities. But, um, Alderman Sanoyka, did, when you brought up your suggestion request to have staff provide us with a long-range holiday, uh, plan. For the ambiance in the city, did you have any expectations on when to see this? By the beginning of the new year, before this year's over? Did you have any assumptions on what you wanted?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So I had mentioned either January or February at a committee of the whole. We can then review that in twenty twenty-one. Um, if that's too soon for staff, uh, then we can push that out. I, that month was thrown, was, um, suggested. Uh, based off of the planning, um, for twenty twenty. And that, from our understanding, community development begins their planning in January of, of, of the year.
Perfect. So question for staff, leading with Manager Crumstock as City Manager, uh, is that January, February timeframe, timeframe attainable?
I think we will shoot for that. And if we fall into anything that for some mysterious reason, we can't make that February date, then we will let people know. But we will shoot for that.
And will you let us know in January if February is not gonna be, uh, on the radar for it? So we have.
That is correct. Yep.
All right. Thank you. So that, that leaves one last thing to do here, and that's to call for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Vessesi, and thank you, Alderman Cannon, for the second. Um, is there any discussion on this motion to adjourn? And if not, I'd like to have the clerk call the roll.
Cannon.
Absolutely.
Bud Matts.
Definitely.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veniziano.
Yes.
Vessesi.
I guess so.
Yes, this.
Home for midnight.
Okay.
With the range, with the range of positives, we're all good to go. So thank you all and have a good night.